Excellent, we're gonna start the meeting this evening. Welcome to the Goffstown Planning Board September 26, 2013 Planning Board Meeting. If we could just go around the table and introduce ourselves first.
Brian Rose, I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Phil Duval, Selectman.
Chris Nader.
Galibroch, Recording Secretary.
Richard Meany.
Simone Duhamel.
Leah Walczko.
And my name is John Heikel, I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. I wanna just announce that Leah Walczko and Simone Duhamel will be the alternates voting this evening, and thank you for coming, both of you, and everyone else that was able to make it today. We have a correspondence, we have some old business, I think this, minutes, yes, we do wanna approve the minutes first, and has everyone read the minutes? And if they have, would somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second. Approved by Richard, seconded by Phil. Any questions or comments on it, any changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Simone is abstaining, because she wasn't here, I assume?
Yep.
Great, well, thank you, has the minutes for last meeting, that was...
I can see.
That was an interesting meeting last, two weeks ago. And it was great, by the way. Okay, let's take up some old business. MAP 26, Lot 23, completeness review, site plan review, hearing for proposal to build, to build an 1,800 square foot building for the proposed small construction equipment rental business, 273 Mast Road LLC, owner 273 Mast Road, Zone CIFZ, continued from August Brian, you wanna... Everyone up on this?
So, this is MAP 26, Lot 23, it's a proposal to build an 1,800 square foot building, it's for a proposed small construction equipment rental business located at 273 Mast Road. Owner's name is 273 Mast Road LLC, and we have Don Duval, who is here as the applicant to represent them. Basically, this site had been approved by the town to have a shed business at one point in time, and that never went through, but then, what's being proposed tonight is to basically tear down whatever, there is a small shed on the property, the previous proposal had been to store a bunch of sheds for sale, basically, all along the edges of, around the edges of the site, and, but that's no longer under proposal. This one would be to store equipment for rental, and the business that would be going in would be to rent machinery such as what you would do for minor landscaping projects on your properties, Bobcats, that type of thing. So, that's, there's currently actually a business on Mast Road that does this, and that's this group here, MB3 is the name of the business that's doing that, and so they would be moving that rental business to this new location next to the mobile station. So, with that, I'll just go through just some quick comments on this. As far as comments, I listed what I had for planning comments, I also listed what I was given from the engineering and sewer from a previous review, then you also have in your updated packets that was submitted to you on your table, there is a, an updated engineering review memo from Megan. If you look back, it's dated September 25, 2013, from Megan regarding MAP 26, Lot 23 DBW comments. So, we can review those, I don't know if Megan's here yet or not, but, anyway. So, basically, these were review comments that I had done based on a submittal that we got mid-last week, as a revised plan based on some TRC comments that we had done on August 20. And so, what basically they were is, you know, I just had an issue with the handicap stall being designed correctly, and so I put that on there. Noting the dimensions of the building, making sure that our data shows correct dimensions everywhere, and then making sure the approval block is correct, also making sure that there are one-way signs appropriately noted, and I felt it might be good to add a one-way sign on the right-hand side of the site as you are exiting the site that says, "Don't enter" that way, because, you know, people are gonna come in and park, and then they're gonna want to back out and go back out the entranceway, instead of having them go out that way, we want them to continue to go out the exit on the other side. So, somehow making sure that people go that way would be appropriate. Also, parking stalls are supposed to be nine feet in width, not eight and a half, and then, on the landscape plan, page LO1, it says, it's just to show the existing layout, and this should so, should show proposed layout, and then also change the approval block for our development regulations. Megan, and also sewer, had submitted comments, and I'm gonna go through and read her updated memo, because these ones are most likely out of date in my report. So, the sewer commission requests a 10-foot easement to be documented as part of the approval and shown on the plan. The easement shall be 10 feet from centerline of the sewer pipe, which ends up being only six feet or so onto the property for future construction. The note on the plan will not suffice for a future easement. Number two, sewer service much, must come out to the main, to main and be 10 feet off the property line. This means the 10-inch SDR 35 sewer main will need to be extended by approximately 10 feet, please show on plans with a note. Three is, please revise the note and detail for a 6-inch sewer service pipe, not a 4-inch. Number four is revise sewer detail to have stone to top of pipe, then fabric layer, then the one foot, one foot of sand layer. And number six, five, fix font for notes under locust map so they are not bold and difficult to read. Six, revise planning board approval block to say Goffstown not hooks it. And number seven, proposed drainage cauc and system look good, a private drainage maintenance agreement will be required, though, for this system. And also just a note saying, "I can't find Bob Rook's email, so if someone can forward to him also," okay. So, those are the comments from Megan that are basically the updated review comments for this revised plan. Now, it's my understanding also that Don Duval has revised the plan again, and is, I think probably here tonight showing you his newly revised plan. So, I want to just quickly go through what my recommendations would be, but then we can, we can kind of figure out any approval conditions that we wanna change around based on what may be presented tonight. So, my recommendations are to hold the applicant's presentation, conduct a public hearing, resolve any remaining issues, and then approve the site plan with conditions, and those would be to be determined as we go throughout the evening. So, with that, the public hearing was continued, so we've already accepted the plan and held some public hearing on this project, and so I'll turn it back to the Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brian. Very thorough. Any questions, discussion by the board?
I apologize if I, I apologize to the board for being late tonight and the applicant. And I may have missed this in the previous discussion or before I came in, so my apologies again for that. Is there, am I missing snow storage somewhere on the site plan?
Answer it.
Maybe?
Well, I guess to Brian, is there, am I not, is there a snow storage designated somewhere here that I am not seeing?
Not that I recall, I'm not, I don't think that they did have.
I believe we don't, we have not shown it. Don Duval, for the applicant, for the record, no, we have not shown a snow storage area. It's probably an oversight by us, but I don't have a problem designating a spot.
Well, I thought I'd throw that out there before you did your presentation.
No, no, that's, you know, I appreciate it, I mean, that's, could be one of your conditions, but, yes.
'Cause I wasn't, I know that the business that I drive by is operating on a substantially smaller site now, so I didn't know in the winter what the requirements were gonna be, even for having clear area, 'cause I don't know what the business is in the winter as compared to the summer. So, I didn't know just before, when your presentation curves, if you could address that, that issue.
Are you all set, or my turn, or?
No, really, I'd like to stay with the committee, with the board right now, and we'll give you a chance to tell us all about it. Any more?
You said it's not Barbara, was it?
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, great, let's have a presentation by the applicant, if you would please state your name.
Okay, Don Duval, Duval survey for the applicant. We'll take note of the comment that there was no snow storage identified on the plan, but we will identify an area and possibly what a, like a typical note, if it cannot, if we get overburdened, it would be removed from the site, it's typical. Basically, it's the same plan we had last month, but we did make a, if you wanna call it a major change, originally, the whole site was gravel. Now, we've shown, I'm not sure if I'd call it considerable, but it's a larger portion that we've paved. One of the reasons for the paving was, Brian made comments to the one-way signs, now with pavement, we'll be able to identify arrows, directional arrows on the pavement, I think that'll help immensely. Going back to the comments, for the most, I won't go through them one at a time, but for the most part, we have taken care of all of the comments that Brian had. Certification, plan, parking designation, we've shown the, how we come up with the number of parking spaces that we have. Brian had a, you know, again, we talked about the one-way signs, we've added notes to the plan that at a point, added a note on the plan that the existing building on the site is to be removed. We've adjusted the handicap parking to be in conformance with your regulations. We've modified the size of the parking stalls, we had them eight and a half, they're nine foot, so we've shown that indication. As far as landscaping, again, whatever changes, the one I've seen so far, he still does not have his approval block, but I will address that and have him add it to the plan. At least the one he sent me, I did not see an approval block.
There is an approval, approval block on that.
Oh, there is one on the engineer's plan, there is not one on the landscape plan. That's one I will take care of. And again, going back to Megan's comments, I think we've made most of the comments that she's taken care of, with the exception of two. The 10-foot sewer easement, originally intent was to be centered on a pipe yet to be built. And if she's, her comment is that the easement would only come into our property six or so feet, we'd probably just come up with an easement six foot wide, if that's appropriate, or, you know, if the board goes along with that. I can't really say a 10-foot easement on something that doesn't exist. So, using the sewer department or Megan's notes, we would probably make the sewer easement six feet on the property. And the drainage maintenance agreement, we'll come up with that, I'll work with Megan, I'm not sure if she has one in-house that we would modify to fit the situation, but I think we can take care of that quite easily. So, I think we've gone through, like I said, we've gone through most of the comments, I did email, I think early this morning, or last night, to Brian, and he was quite busy, so I'm not sure if he's even had a chance to go through the latest, I kinda figured it that, but what we'll do is we'll make our changes and email a PDF form to Brian for a final check to see if we've gotten everything taken care of. So, I think that's about all I have, like I say, we've addressed in-house most of your comments, with the exception of this sewer easement, and working with Megan on the drainage maintenance agreement. So, if the board or Megan, I don't know who would make the determination, if you want, a six-foot wide drainage easement, six and a half, whatever you come up with, we'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Duval, any questions for the applicant from the board? Phil?
I have a couple, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the landscape plan, I'm looking at, there's a note about the split rail fence. I only see a mention of the split rail fence on the one portion, I assume there's three portions of split rail fence, it's consistent?
It's gonna run all the way down the front of the property.
All right, yeah, I understand that, and I don't have a problem with the fence, the only concern that I have is that you have two breaks where the driveways are, driveways are, but I don't see, maybe it's on here and I missed it, but I don't see an indication on the other two sections that the split rail fence is there.
It's there, you can see the logo, John, but you just need to add the note on the, that's a split rail fence at the island, and at the west side of the, west side of the entrance.
Okay, we'll take...
It's just a note that needs to be added, too.
Yeah, see, they show.
But he just made the, means they extend it so that it's pointing to the other two sections.
That it's in three places, typical three places.
Right.
'Cause you don't have a thing there with the...
Right.
The reason we did that is, we felt like it would give good separation between 114 and the property, and just sort of gave that deviation of where people should be pulling in and out.
Excuse me, sir, would you mind stating your name for us, please?
Brian Briggs, I'm one of the owners.
Brian Briggs?
Briggs.
Thank you.
Right, no, I didn't have a problem with the fence, I thought the fence was appropriate being split-railled, because the police chief's concern was visibility, since that portion of the road is 40 miles an hour, and I think the split rail fence allows visibility from both sides, so I think, I think it's appropriate. Can I have one other question?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know, again, if it's on here, on each side of the openings and on the right side, lower right-hand corner, on my, yeah, there are five diameters that I thought were trees at first, but I'm not sure.
Which one, these right here?
Yes, right, there are five of them.
I see where his legend was. I believe those are the trees.
Well, I got confused, because you have the legend for the plantings.
Yes.
But I'm assuming these plantings are for shrubs?
Those five, I believe they're actually maples, they are trees.
Yeah, he's calling him a deciduous planting, I'm not sure if he shows up there.
And maybe that's why, 'cause it didn't, but I wasn't sure.
It does say red maple.
Yeah.
Corn 85.
Oh, okay, it's down in the lower part, that's why, that's why I was a little, what threw me off was, on the left-hand side, you have the detail for the plantings, for the shrubs.
Okay.
And then you had the whole thing, and I didn't, I didn't catch it at the very bottom.
Yeah, okay. Like up here, like you say, they've got the size, the quantity.
Right, that part's cut off on what I'm looking at.
Ah, okay, okay, well, there's a whole legend up there, the type of tree, the planting name, the size, the quantity, and how they label it.
Right.
That's why I'm asking my question.
Oh, not a problem.
Any other questions from the board? Barbara?
I just wanna say, I like this plan a lot, and I know you all were anxious to come at our last meeting, and your surveyor encouraged you to wait to come to this meeting, and I suspect the time, that the extra time also gave you time to address it, and I think this is a very nice change, and it will be a nice fixture on Mast Road, which has become, that section has become sort of open, and I think it will be a very nice addition to it. How many parking spaces did you end up with after you made the changes in the size that Brian asked for with the ring?
We still have the seven.
You do, you had enough room?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, you only had to widen them up seven times five, so, half a foot.
Didn't they want a ramp for the handicap, too, so?
Pardon?
Didn't she want a ramp for the handicap space?
Well, I don't know if we needed a ramp as much, you needed the two, the two spaces.
Not a ramp, you needed the...
Yeah, you needed the, which we have, the designation for the...
They had a, they had a smaller one, it just needed to be widened, so, it was, they had enough room.
All right, I just wondered if they lost, I mean, you had enough anyways, I just wondered if you were gonna, you was wondering.
It works out easier now that that whole area is paved, so it wasn't a problem.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons why we decided to pave, for, we felt like that would be hard with a wheelchair to roll across gravel or whatever, plus being able to strike the driveway with directional arrows, it just seemed to be cleaner and...
All right, just for the record, we did receive a comment from the fire department about whether or not there were gonna be hazardous materials on site, and I think this was addressed at the previous presentation, but just, if you could just address it again tonight, my recollection is there aren't going to be hazardous materials there, and I just wanted to confirm that. So, thank you.
Not large storage, but none at all, or no storage of them?
We have no storage of any hazardous materials, other than our delivery truck has a small fuel cell on it for fueling up equipment off-site.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe a couple quarts of oil for topping machines off, but other than that, we don't.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure you didn't say none. Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you very much. We'll open this up now to the public comment, if there's any public, any people out there that would like to speak in regards to this application, feel free to do so now.
Just regarding this application?
Just regarding this application right now.
Yep.
Okay, there, it looks like there is no public comment on this one, thank you, we'll close the public comment. Any action by the board?
I'm trying to take notes.
Okay.
I move that we approve the site plan, subject to the conditions, one through 13, as recommended by the planning officer, with the modification to number 13, that the easement mentioned by the town engineer be six feet, vice the 10 feet. Additional condition, designation of snow storage location on the plan, with notation that when that storage site is filled to capacity, excess snow will be removed from the site, and designation with the term split rail fence as appropriate on the plan.
Question, you mean to indicate that it's in three places?
Yes. I'll second that.
We have a motion on the table from Richard, seconded by Phil. Any comments or questions on that motion, would you like to speak to it? No other comments, let's take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? That's seven, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duval, good luck, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we go on to new business, I have one item of old business I'd like to just bring up to the planning board. On Tuesday, the Board of Selectmen sent a letter to New Hampshire Housing regarding the community planning grant. We received a response back dated September 26, and it's to the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Dear Mr. Adams, subject is community planning grant. Dear Mr. Adams, I have received the letter dated September 23, 2013, from the Board of Selectmen, regarding the community planning grant for the Pernardville Sustainable Community Plan and Smart Code. Based on the information provided in the board's letter, we accept the representation of the board, that it believes that the town has met its obligations under the grant agreement between the town and New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, dated August 9, 2012. As I described in my September 5, 2013, letter to the town administrator, we are prepared to reimburse the town's consultant costs up to the full grant amount of $50,000, provided the town can demonstrate that it has met its match requirements, as described in the grant agreement and the town's original grant application, which is incorporated as part of the grant agreement. To close out this project, please also send me copies of the work done by the town's consultant, as well as documentation of public meetings and other materials you deem to be relevant. These may, these may be submitted to me in electronic format. The grant agreement also include, also includes a condition requiring the town to report to New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority over a period of five years after project completion. This is intended to permit an assessment of the development activity under any regulatory changes adopted by the town as a result of the project. Given that these measures will not be adopted by the town, New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority waives that condition. Please let me know if I can be of any further assistance, and that's Benjamin D. Frost, ASQ, AICP, Director of Public Affairs. So, there will be no smart code coming to the planning board, so the issue is faith and complete.
Thank you very much, Phil.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I just wanna bring that up, because I think there might be members of the public that are here, that are just anxious to find out what's been going on with that. You received that this afternoon?
Very important, thank you very much, we did have a meeting last week with Plan Pernardville, we voted against it seven, zero here at the board.
Yep.
And this was just a finalization, that the smart code of the zoning will not be included, and right now, the entire thing is done, and all we need to do is send them proof that...
Documentation.
Documentation of what we did, which is pretty good news for us. I want to, we have four of the things on the, four articles on the agenda tonight, for the sake of speeding the meeting along, there are a few folks that would like to comment, knowing, and I just wanna ask them, because I think freedom of speech is essential to this process, do you still want to comment in public, knowing that the entire project is incomplete? If you do, I would ask that you please don't repeat what another speaker has said, and please keep it as brief as possible, because at this point, as important as it may be, it's moot, and I hate to use that term too often, but I think right now, so why don't we, because we haven't moved into new business yet, so why don't we allow the speaker to come up and just say something, if... because we haven't moved into new business yet, uh, so why don't we allow, um, the speaker to come up and just say something, uh, if you would, please? I also want to remind folks that, uh, cell phones in here, if anyone has them on, please remember to turn them back on, uh, after the meeting's over.
You're assuming they're off, right?
I'm assuming they're already off, yes.
Words.
Yeah. That's a nice way of saying it, right, turn them off. Um, Cheryl Anderson, Joffrey Street, Pernardville. I would like this in the official record, please. I hear your letter, but I have a letter from September fifth, written by also Ben Frost. And, um, he states in here, she had asked the same similar question, if we were done, if the, they could cancel it, or if the planning board voted down the plan, was it moot? And I want to read you one paragraph that does concern me, because it isn't quite in agreement with that. It says, "With either scenario you have proposed, there's an important underlying consideration. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development is the source of funds for the CPG program. As structured through the cooperative agreement between NHHFA and HUD, the town of Goffstown is a sub-grantee and is legally bound to many of the conditions of the cooperative agreement. See Section Seven of the town's grant agreement with NHHFA. While NHHFA may undertake certain actions as described in my response to your questions, even if NHHFA deems the town's obligations to be complete, a reviewing HUD auditor may not agree and may demand repayment by NHHFA of the funds expended in reimbursement to the town, and NHHFA in turn may demand repayment by the town. We believe that the only way for the town to be fully relieved of such a potential obligation for repayment is for the town to repay the thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollar grant money already expended." If you go to Section Seven, which it tells you to refer to, it states, "The municipality acknowledges and agrees that the CPG program is governed by certain local, state, and federal laws, regulations, and rules, which shall include but are not limited to the provisions of the HUD Form 1044 and the cooperative agreement terms and conditions attached as Exhibit C, and all applicable obligations and requirements under HUD and the Office of Management and Budget. The municipality covenants and agrees that it shall fully comply with all applicable provisions of these documents." And, um, Exhibit C is the U.S. HUD Office of Sustainable Housing Community Cooperative Agreement provisions. Now, there is a section in there for defaults and disputes. And it does say that HUD makes the final decision. And if it should determine that the recipient is in default, that it can take, there are seven actions. One is demand repayment of all award amounts, but that's already been declared in this letter, which I think is the wisest move, but that's beside the point for your board. It does say to others to initiate litigation or other legal proceedings designed to require compliance with the statute, regulations, or terms or conditions of this award agreement or other pertinent authorities, and take any remedial action legally available. And since they could still determine us in default or breach of contract, which is how the reference made earlier, would be regarded as a breach of contract, that's Ben Frost wording. Regardless of what he says in that letter, he's NHHFA, HUD could come back at us. So if you look at the, um, deliverables in the grant, and I sought counsel on this, I'm not going out this blind, we do need to vote down formally the Smart Code before this board. And Sue DeRusso, a week and a half ago, when even that, agreed with that, and said that herself. And now she has turned around and changed her tune about that, I don't know why. But I don't think we can trust NHHFA, they may be willing to deem us having fulfilled it, but nothing says that HUD will. And I think to protect our town, we need to get this Smart Code voted down. As we did the plan, it's not that long a process. She said it must be voted down because there's no plan to base it on. It is a formality, those were her words. And if we don't, we could end up in similar situation to Westchester County, with them coming back at us at some point in time. And I just am going to push this through the select board and the planning board, this needs to be done. I truly believe that's, as a chair of the board, can you ask them to put it before you? Do you have that power, so that it can be voted down, and we are protected for sure?
You're asking?
Yes, as a chair, can you, can this board, or you, ask to have it brought before you?
I believe this board, I believe this board has the authority to ask for it to have, come before us.
Okay, then I would submit that I wish you would do that. I'm asking you strongly to please do that, to protect the town. You're one of our frontline, you and the selectmen, someone has to protect us against any negative reaction being declared and breach of contract. We don't need to be sued, we don't want it coming back a year from now, six months from now, and biting us in the you-know-where. We want this resolved. I'm seeking for a lot of people, businessmen and residents, want this resolved, they want the Smart Code voted down. So could you please do that for us?
Point of order.
We will, we'll, we'll take that up as soon as we finish the public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. One more speaker?
Point of order, why are we having public comment on? We have no notice, public hearing tonight in regards to anything, and I'm wondering what we're having public comment on? Since we have no Smart Code, we have not considered any Smart Code, it hasn't been presented to us. I just heard references to all sorts of things that I don't have in front of me. And I think you just rendered an opinion that might be incorrect in regards to our ability to do things. So, I have a point of order question as to what, why we are having a public hearing, and what we are having a public hearing on, because it has not been noticed.
We're not having a public hearing, we're having a public comment.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Mr. Burt, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I am Representative John Burt, I live on Bay Street here in Goffstown. And to answer the, uh, the, um, board member's question, I believe at the end of every, um, item that you bring up, you have public comment, and that's what this is. You know, and, and the selectman, um, was fine enough to bring up that information for us to hear, and I do appreciate that. And so you're just following, I believe, uh, standard rules of, um, you know, public comment after, after that. Just like you did the last item that was here, you did that. I want to bring up about what the last speaker said. I totally one-hundred percent agree with her. I have been in, again, communications with Westchester, um, with Representative Flanagan and several others. They said that the, the Smart Code itself has to be voted down. Because if you just put it in the drawer, and I'm assuming that's where it is right now, it's never been officially, you know, voted yes or no on. So it has to be voted down, or, you know, voted on. HUD themselves, from what I understand from Westchester, uh, will not give you an official letter. So I hope that the selectman does not go down that route, because it will not come. They will not put themselves out there. You know, even Mr. HUD there that was here last time, um, Mr. Carson, he said HUD doesn't give letters like that, we're not going to. You know, we could probably give you a letter that we'll agree with, you know, what the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority said, but pretty much, we're not going to put it in record. So I just hope that you will ask the selectmen for the Smart Code, bring it forward. Because what really concerns me also is, uh, what the, uh, selectman rep said is, you know, we're just accepting this fifty thousand dollars. We killed the plan, yet we're in bed with them for five years? Or not?
No.
Oh, what was the five-year thing?
That was what normally happens when you go through with a project, but they said, since we voted it down, we are no longer liable for that five.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. Okay, I, I didn't hear that part, thank you very much. And I would ask this board, and I don't know if you're, if you have the authority to do it, but I ask you please to bring the Smart Code here, vote it down, and then after that, if there's a way that you guys could take up, you know, and again, I don't know if this is allowed, but to return the money, or ask the selectmen to return the money. That is really, from what I'm hearing from Representative Flanagan and others in the state of New Hampshire, plus Westchester County over New York, that is really the true way of killing this. We can kill the Smart Code, but there's got to be some little glitch in there that they're going to bring, you know, I just don't trust them. So the best way to do it is send that money back. It is a done deal with the money going back. I want to thank you for your time, for, uh, listening to me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume that's the two speakers, that's all we have? Okay, at this time, I'll, uh, close the, the public comment on that. And would you like to act on this tonight? Board, motion? Okay, we will, uh, be discussing this and working on it. Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on with new business. New business, map seventeen, lot one-eighty-four dash one, completeness review, site plan review hearing for a proposal to maintain the pre-existing industrial storage yard use for an excavation business, Ernie's Excavation. Ernest R. Smith and Matthew Bork, thirty-nine Lower Street, Zoned Industrial. Brian, would you like to fill us in on this one, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is a site plan that's before you tonight. In response to a zoning code enforcement letter that I had written, um, about a year ago or so. And, um, that kind of propelled the applicant into, uh, appearing before the zoning board of adjustment, which, um, part of your amended package tonight includes the notice of decision of that zoning board of adjustment hearing. The issues that were brought up in that hearing were in regards to the building, the Quonset hut style structure being too close to the property line, uh, here. And, um, that's, uh, and then also for section seven, three-point-seven and three-point-eleven, which, uh, and that's Table A six, to allow dwelling units as part of a mixed-use project. Part of the, um, larger vision of this lot, there's a, it's a pretty large lot, and there's an existing house that was the established residential use on the lot. Even though it's zone industrial, uh, the, and the use was established as a residential lot. And so, uh, to allow a mixed use with commercial on one part of it and residential on the other part of it, I told them they needed to get a variance, um, because it's, it wasn't allowed in the zone that way. So, uh, they did go and do that, um, the, the zoning board of adjustment meeting was on Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. And, um, so they, they have gotten relief from the zoning ordinance on those issues. They are now, tonight before you, to ask for site plan approval. They do have, uh, a site plan submitted, and they've asked for some waivers on, um, submittal requirements, sections, uh, four, C four, four, C five, nine, ten, eleven, sixteen, twenty, uh, seventeen, twenty, and twenty-four. And then Appendix A roadway standards, Appendix B cistern standards, Appendix C stormwater management standards, and Appendix D erosion control standards, and Appendix F landscape and screening standards. The recommendations by the, or the, the requests by the applicant, um, are to waive those based on the fact that this has been a pre-existing use. My comment to that just would be, it wasn't exactly the existing use as you see it on the plan today. The existing, the structure that's there has been there for a number of years. However, it was moved there without benefit of site plan approval or permit, uh, about eight to ten years ago. Not, not, I'm not sure exactly when it was moved there. But, um, if you look at the older aerial photographs, um, from two thousand and one on this site, you will see, uh, this area had been wooded at one time and was cleared, you know, in, in order to allow for storage of, uh, more equipment and, and vehicles and things like that. So, um, you know, it, it wasn't an existing use per se exactly this way. It was, uh, there, there had been some historical parking of vehicles, uh, for different businesses over time. However, I'm not sure if those ever were really permitted uses and, and, uh, allowed for a business there. So, um, that's part of the reason I had sent them to the, to the zoning board of adjustment as well, just to make sure we go through the correct process, to make sure that this is an allowed use and a, and a properly permitted and approved site planned use. So I did put a few, uh, I, as far as recommendation on those waivers, I don't know that, you know, not waiving them would gain us much. But I'll, I'll allow the board to make that determination. I do, I did in my report, um, recommend to waive it. I, I noted a few comments in my, um, in my report. Just that there wasn't any evidence in the file of these, these uses having existed with any approvals prior. And that, uh, also, we, we would need a handicap stall on site, um, a van-accessible handicap stall. And that the dimensions of the Quonset hut style, um, building and the area of the storage yard need to be noted on the plan. We need the, the dimensions of these in order to be able to calculate the appropriate parking requirements. Also, parking area for vehicles needs to be striped and depicting the number, um, number of stalls. And, uh, let's see, a fifty-foot wetland setback, there is a fifty-foot wetland setback note on the plan. We realized at the TRC meeting that this, uh, actually doesn't apply based on the fact that it would be for an industrial use, which, those uses are exempted by the zoning ordinance from following the wetland setback rules. Let's see, note one on the plan says it's to show existing conditions, and this should be a proposed site plan layout, not existing. Just because that's the way it is, doesn't mean it can't be considered prior. Let's see, note on the plan that the ZBA decision, and what date it was, and any conditions of approval that were associated with it. It's just an, uh, kind of, uh, need for a note on the plan. And then design the landscape island on the north side of this site to ensure that the driveway is at least ten feet from the property line in accordance with the development regulations for driveways separation from other lots. Those are my comments on the, um, site plan. I believe we also received comments from Megan on this one. Can't remember. I may have just incorporated into. Maybe not, okay. So, the, the next recommendations would be to, uh, so waiving the, the requested sections for acceptance, and then to accept the plan as ready for review, as complete and ready for review. The hearing from the applicant, as a presentation from the applicant. And then, uh, I've recommended approval of the site plan, subject to the conditions that are listed in my report, one through twelve. I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. Brian? Any comments or questions from the board?
One question.
Yes.
Brian, any chance that the Quonset hut structure was actually there in two thousand and one, it just? and one, it just wasn't visible because of the canopy of trees?
It was, well, it was on the site, but it was in a different location. It was actually, there's, if you look on the site, there's by the house, there's a lot line that kind of splits on the backside of it, and it sort of straddled the lot line, actually. If you look at the old aerial photographs, you can actually see where it was. But, so it was on the site, but in a different location, and not in use for this use per se, it was kind of for the other use on the other lot. So, that's my understanding, anyway.
Thank you. Any other questions? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How long is the current owner of the property?
About six years.
And a former owner was?
Longer than he owned it?
Former owner.
Paul Lemay.
Lemay.
Paul Lemay. He had a excavator.
Yes, he passed there for like twenty-five years.
And the landfill was open.
Correct.
Sir, would you mind stating your name for us, please?
Ernest Smith, owner.
Thank you. Barbara, question?
Were these comments forwarded to the applicant?
Yes.
Conservation apparently made a comment about snow storage. Was that forwarded to the applicant?
I don't know if that email actually made it over to you, it had kind of come in later. So, I'm not sure, I don't think they did get it.
And just maybe, for presentation purposes, I was a little confused about what's paved and what is proposed paved. Does it look like there are some changes proposed based on this that I'm looking at?
I'll let the applicant address that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? If you would, let's hear from the applicant, please. State your name.
Mr. Chairman, my name is John Cronin, I'm an attorney from Manchester, and our office represents Mr. Smith, who's seated to my far right, who previously spoke.
Sir, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I moved too fast on Ellen. We do have to accept the site plan.
Motion that we determine that there's no regional impact?
Second.
Which one, Richard? Second for Barbara. Speak to your motion.
Comments, questions for the board?
Take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
Seven zero.
Motion to waive development regulations, sections and appendices as indicated on this sheet, and A and B, and that we accept the site plan as complete and ready for review.
Can I make them separate?
Yes, I can.
Make them separate.
Sure, I move number two. Not that number two. You got that, Gail?
Want to speak to your motion, you're all set. You have a second, do you have a second on that?
A second.
Chris, seconds. Speak to your motion, comments, questions from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Barbara's opposed, abstained, six one.
Move that we accept the site plan as complete and ready for review.
Second.
Motion for Rich, second for Barbara. No speak on the motion. Okay, any questions, comments from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Seven zero, thank you.
Your way was faster, though.
I, I was already, you know, I'm just, sometimes I'm, I don't like to wait. Now, let's hear from the applicants, please state your name.
John Cronin and Mr. Ernie Smith is to my far right, who you've already heard from, and Mr. Jay Heavy Sides is on my immediate right, and he's worked with us through the variance process in designing the plans. John Heavy Sides. And we come to you after the presentation and receipt of the variance relief from the zoning board. To give you a little history of the locus, I put up the bigger map first. You can see Warrior Street, and if those of you that are familiar with it, it's by the old landfill, which has been repurposed for athletic fields. On the other side of that street are the PSNH property, which has recently been the subject of some expansion, so it's generally an industrial use out that way. Takes a hard turn at Laurier, at kind of a ninety-degree on the street, and the entrance to this property is right about at that break. Mr. Smith is a proprietor of an excavation business. He has some trucks and equipment and materials that he stores on that particular site. He's been there for about fourteen years, as I think Mr. Devanza stated, that prior to that, Mr. Lemay was there, who stored pipe and other type things and various trucks and equipment. That had went on without incident and a good relationship with the neighbors, for the most part, until in a butter here had some issues with the Quonset Hut in its proximity to the sideline and the fence. That's what prompted, I think, the complaint that triggered a zoning review and brought us to the zoning board of adjustment. That having been resolved, one of the conditions of the variance and one of the discussions we had with Mr. Rose is, really, there's nothing on-site for this or on record, there should be a site plan, there hasn't been. Our first inquiry, whenever we get a situation like that, is one to determine how long the use has been existing, and we have various letters that we submitted in the zoning case that I'll re-submit tonight. And that basically tracks back a exercise of storage industrial-type things, such as trucks and equipment going back to the seventies. The second thing that we always do on this to determine whether it's pre-existing or non-conforming type use is, when was the site plan review regulations adopted? Typically, we do that by doing a title search at the registry, as the statute requires under the enabling authority that there be a certificate recorded at the registry of deeds. Mysteriously, we couldn't find that at the registry of deeds. I'm not saying that it's not there, but it's something that we could not find, which raises an administrative or a technical question, which I don't think we need to debate tonight. We did find some records that suggested that the site plan regulations were adopted sometime around nineteen eighty-one. There may be some discrepancy with that, but I just make a note of it for the record. We looked at those various letters, we took a look at the site. If you see here, the house is rather remote down by the PSNH area, and this area is a ravine, I would call it, steep slopes, and it really naturally divides the two parcels. This lot was created by subdivision back in two thousand and three, so that's when it came into existence. Mr. Smith doesn't really conduct business on this site. He has a few folks that may work from him to time to time, that may bring their personal vehicles, park it there, pick up a truck, and they do most of their work at other people's homes, whether it's septic or excavation-type work, they don't do it on this site. So, there's not a lot of people traffic or customer traffic or anything to speak of. The Quonset Hut is used to store materials, and from all indications from the neighbors, that he keeps it nice and tidy and does a good job of keeping things orderly. His goal here is to get this in compliance, make Mr. Rose and make the planning board happy. He hired Mr. Heavy Sides to take a look at the lot, and it's a historical configuration in the way things were done. Mr. Heavy Side looked at the ordinance and the regulations and said, what can we do to make this better than what it is? Some of the good comments that Mr. Rose had raised to us in various meetings were to try and define that entrance in Laurier Street. Historically, it's just been a long, open section with no definition, and that seems to have been the biggest concern, and we have no quarrel with that. Also, the question with respect to some of these recommendations, we have no objection to any of those, and certainly make the notes that are required on the plan, pay the handicap spot and so forth. This site is kind of a mix currently, there's portions of it that have pavement on it, the other is a hardpan-type material that I think Mr. Heavy Sides will be better to comment on. I'll turn it over him, to him at this time, and he can tell you basically what he's done at the design and what he's tried to accomplish with this plan.
For the record, my name is John Heavy Sides from Meridian Land Services. We conducted a survey of the site back in two thousand and twelve, in preparation for the zoning board. Since that time, we have added a few things to the plan to show some proposed upgrades, really just to the paved area and the entrance. The existing gravel area, I'll outline it, starts in this area and comes around, around to the top of the bank, over to the Quonset Hut, and across the property line, just of the pavement, the existing pavement. So, the existing pavement from Laurier Street and the paved driveway, the abutting lot, is rather extensive here. So, the proposal is to better define it by actually paving a portion of this lot, so we can define parking spaces. The handicap space that Brian mentions, we can fit in over here with the aisle beside it. We want to better define the entrance by trying to break up some of this pavement, and we had proposed a landscape island on both sides, just to really define what this is, and put up a stockade fence, six for high stockade fence, once again, to do a visual break, and to help define this entrance, because I believe Ernie had said that sometimes cars just come around the street and go right into his lot, look around, back up, and off they go. So, it's, they have entertainment out there. With the respect to the hardpack, the gravel has been packed and packed and packed from all the traffic, and is basically considered impervious surface. So, going from a gravel hardpack to a pavement really would not change the drainage characteristics other than you won't have puddles anymore, you still get the same amount of runoff. And it would just better define the area that they will use for their vehicle storage.
That's basically the presentation. We're open to answer any questions that you may have, and we ask that you look favorably on it, and certainly we would accept the conditions of approval recommended by Mr. Rose.
Any questions from the board? I have a question. What you said about the nineteen eighty-one zoning, are you implying that the Quonset Hut was there before nineteen eighty-one because you couldn't find anything?
No, no, my comment was only a technical question, and I just raised it for the record. It was in my work to determine pre-existing nature of the use. We know this use in some form, let's just call it storage of trucks and construction materials, goes back, at least by a letter in the file, to the seventies at some point in time. My next step is to determine when was site plan regulations adopted by the town. The way we typically do that, when we have, and we have this in most towns we do land use work on, we go online today, rather than to the registry, and look for the certificate, because the statute, the enabling statute giving you planning board authority, says the planning board of the town's supposed to record a certificate. We usually find that pretty quick. In this particular case, we didn't find it, and we can't find it. However, we did find a document that's not recorded, that's in your regular records, that infers that site plan regulations were adopted in nineteen eighty-one. I use that as the yardstick, saying, these were adopted in nineteen eighty-one, and I can show some use from the butters and from people that have lived out there into the seventies, even though it may not be exact, it's of the same tenor and kind, in our view, to make it pre-existing. It may be a distinction without a difference, we're here to make what's going on there currently valid and conforming and so forth, but I just raised it as a matter of record.
Thank you. Barbara?
Does Megan have any comments on this?
Yeah, I just have two quick things. If they could show the existing drainage reasons for note number four on the plan, show them, you know, the only possibility, and then also a note for just maybe add to the conditions that a driveway permit is required, it'll open gravel pavement.
Do you see any issues with the driveway permit, Megan?
Gravel surface would be considered existing area, so, you know, if we were doing a new permit, your driveway's not supposed to be.
Right.
You know, ten feet from lot line, but if it's gravel already, we would consider that existing, so I wouldn't.
Okay. I do have a question in regards to water runoff, snow storage, and the fact that we are by water here, even though the wetland setback does not apply. I understand the applicant has said it's essentially hardpack and you're not changing runoff. Do you think there's a need to do calculations on runoff for pre and post, given the current site conditions? And then, I would like the applicant, that's to Megan, the applicant to address whatever Megan might say, and to address the snow storage issue that was raised by Conservation being right by the river there. I mean, not the river of water, wetlands.
I agree that compacted gravel is equivalent to pavement.
So, there's no need for any calculations?
Yes, it's considered an impervious surface, so going to pavement is a variable change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? With that, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
John, did you want them to address Barbara's other question about the snow storage?
Conservation has commented that they have concerns about the snow storage being at that particular edge of the site, given the topography, which it would appear be the initial purpose of the site plan. Is there anything that can be done about that, and what sort of conditions are existing when you do do the snow storage on site? I don't know what you're doing for salting or sanding.
We haven't seen that note, but based on the reference to it, I'd ask Mr. Heavy Sides the historical snow storage process, and if there's anything that can be done with that.
If he knows.
Well, just going from the gravel surface to the paved, the gravel, when you plow, you will pick up some of the loose and small fines from the gravel surface, and currently that's probably pushed over the shoulder. Going to pave, that should reduce it. Do you sand at all?
I don't sand at all.
So, it should reduce it, the amount of fines in, so that would be in the soil, I mean, in the snow, that would go over the edge. You still get some, whatever drips off a car or a vehicle, but you aren't plowing that whole big surface, so there should be a reduction or no increase.
All right, but the reality is, is that while there's a note that says so, snow storage on this, the current hardpack, soon-to-be-paved surface corners, the reality is it's getting pushed over the edge, right?
I believe so.
Okay. And that's the same. And that's the same lot, right?
Yeah.
I guess I understand that that's issue, but I think I would like a note on the plan, the sort of the standard note, that if the snow storage becomes an issue, it can be readdressed, because you might not be the last owner of this property, you probably hope that someday, you won't be the owner of this property. And if conditions change, as far as people treating the snow or what they're doing on it, given its proximity to water flow to the river, I'd like some, a condition on the plan that the snow storage will be appropriate and on-site, and that it can be, if there's an issue with runoff to the river, it can come back to take a look at it. But I don't see any issues with what you're proposing, but I just want to address the reality of what's going on in case it changes in the future.
Okay, I'm fine.
Thank you.
How far is the river? Is that, is that an issue, or is that?
When I was out, I've been out there probably close to a half dozen times, and I don't want to, say, over, highlight, it's not really a wetland or river, it's more a deep swale, and the times that I've been out, it's generally been dry, so I don't think it's a wetland of value that we would refer to, but I'm sure it does collect water and storms and that sort of thing. And it's over, it's very steep gore-type area.
Right, okay, it's not a river.
No, it doesn't seem to have running water continuously now, I've been there.
I mean, it's on the plan, it marks as the wet, it was. I mean, it's on the plan, it marks as the wetland. I mean, that's appropriate. I shouldn't have, but the runoff is, that's exactly where it's headed, which is why I just wanted to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe we could fill it in someday.
Just to answer that question, too, you were asked about how far it is. It's approximately 50 feet to the backside of the pave, where they're proposing the pavement would be, so.
There's plenty of room there. Fulfills the setback requirement.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board, questions? Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to open this up to public comment. For anyone that would like to speak regarding it, please come up front and have a seat and state your name and address, please.
Matt Vienz, I represent Fourth Street Realty, which owns 26 Cross Street, that abuts the property.
Okay.
My question slash concern is the stockade fence that proposed, that's a kind of a tricky corner, and I just don't want there to be a line-of-sight issue with my tenants leaving the parking lot. I like the landscape berm, but the stockade fence, that's all.
The eight-foot high stockade fence.
Six foot.
Is that eight or six?
Six foot.
Oh, it's six, okay.
Well, the other problem is, of course, when people drive in it, like they have in the past, and they don't, they just see the gravel, and they don't see the fence. The fence ends up on your property, doesn't it?
Right, right. So, I mean, I'm in favor of the island. I have no problem with any of it, just the island would be fine, but if we could get rid of the fence, that would be great.
Would it be possible to just stop the fence a distance back from the property line, so that when people are pulling out to the street, they can actually get a clear view? That's another option.
As much as we could.
Go ahead, Chris.
Would a mirror work in this instance?
I don't know. I hate to, I hate to make it more difficult, that's all, you know. Easy is always better.
Have you spoken with the, have you spoken with the abutter to ask that question?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
No, I mean, we're friendly, but we didn't talk about the fence at all, it's just a thought, that's all.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. No other questions, all right, okay. Any other, any other comments from the public? I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, sir, one more question from Phil.
Yeah, well, I guess, my question is regarding the fence, because my understanding from the applicant, it was the, they proposed to put the fence up, and I'm not sure exactly what the reason was, but I assume when they proposed to put a stockade fence up, we basically can't see through, is to.
Upper their use.
So, you don't see the equipment that's parked on the other side, so.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that, you know, people, it's a tricky corner and.
No, no, I know the, I know the corner well.
Yeah.
I know the corner well.
I just want to make sure that there isn't an accident, that's all.
No, and I can understand that. I just didn't want to make sure the fence was removed, and then you wish the fence was partially there.
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, John Cronin, again, just in a follow-up, I had a chance to chat with Mr. Smith while the abutter was speaking. We put that in there as, I guess, the goal, to try and better define it. It's not that we're in love with it or need it, so whatever the board sees as the best option there, we're comfortable with. And if you want to do something to remove it and put a note that it could be revisited, we're okay with that as well. We don't have an issue either way.
Split rail fence, just like the other one.
There you go. Okay, thank you. So, it's good when neighbors get along.
Yes.
Any other public comment? We'll close public comment.
Can I ask a question? So.
To an applicant, I mean, to the.
To the applicant, yeah. Instead of revisiting this later, whatever, to firm everything up.
Sure.
Are they okay if we say to stop the fence, I don't know, five feet, or whatever it is, that would permit line-of-sight issues from being any kind of a problem maybe in the future, so that it's just done?
Whatever's best for you and the abutter. We'd prefer to have it be done, and I guess my message to you is whatever you think is best.
So, you're, he'd be fine with if we stopped that fence a few feet before the driveway, so that the neighbor can see better?
Again, whatever you think. If the abutter wants it to go, we want to make the abutter happy, and Mr. Smith's made it a point to keep the place nice, keep it clean, and be friendly with the abutters. So, he wants to do what's best for the abutter, and we certainly want to do what you believe is best.
Okay.
Thanks.
And we want to do what you want to do is best.
So, if we picked, if we said to a point on the, for the purposes of your final plan, you need definition for your plan, so if we said to a point to provide adequate line of sight for the abutter as resolved between the applicant, the abutter, and the highway department, that would be fine.
That would be fine. My only concern, and this is a personal concern, not one from Mr. Smith, if you had a real short fence there in that open area, if you've been out there, it would look kind of funny.
Well, that's, exactly. So, that's why I'm saying, if you all go out there and decide, between the three of you, that there's no fence, then your final plan comes in with that, and it's gone.
That's perfect.
If it's half a fence, it's half a fence.
It's fine.
Right, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. No more public, I mean, no more comments or questions from the board.
Could we get maybe Megan to just address line-of-sight? Because I think the landscape islands sort of may already provide enough distance between where, you know, if the fence went all the way up to the backside of that little round landscape island that's at the entrance, it may already provide enough visibility to have good line-of-sight. But I don't know what the line-of-sight rules are, so I just thought maybe Megan could.
Well, I'm assuming that my solution, my proposal would have allowed that to be the answer.
Exactly.
Because I don't think the abutter really knows where the fence is proposed to be ending. He just knows there's a stockade fence there, and it could be a problem. And if the landscape island is sufficient to pull it back, so there's a line of sight, then that solves it. If not, they come up with a different thing.
I think Megan.
But I think the landscape, my understanding is, this plan, if we approved it within our conditions, that landscape island would stay to provide the definition.
Yes.
Between the lots.
Yes.
So, is Megan going to answer?
If Megan has, if you have something to add, Megan, please.
No, the only thing, just looking as, you know, I was trying to draw the lines along the road. It's, the driveway is so wide between the two properties, that I cannot, you know, it all melds in with the road there, but I mean, if you try and connect the road, the reality is, it seems like that landscape island's already 10 feet back or so, and when we do sightline, you usually would stand, you go at the edge of the road, you walk back 10 feet into the driveway, you stand there, and that's where your line of sight is. So, I'd be concerned if this stuff was right up against the road, obviously, I mean, you can't put the fence right against the road anyway, so, one, it's not an encroachment because it's on private property, but, two, I feel like there's at least 10 feet back already. But again, that's a corner, you know, you know, I don't drive that corner all the time, the people who live there do, so maybe because it's a sea of pavement, cars kind of hug into the driveway apron, you know what I mean? I don't know how cars are driving around that corner. I mean, it's something I could go look at or whatever. But at least based on our rules, it looks like it's at least 10 feet back, and it shouldn't be an issue. It's definitely something we can look at when we go do the driveway permit. You know, if I got out there and I said, "Well, it's definitely blocking sight distance," but I can let them know that, what they could do is, when they file for the driveway permit, they could put a stake where they want to start their fence, and then I can just try and figure out if that's going to be an issue, so I can address it with the driveway permit.
One other thing that I just really kind of realized is that the landscape island that's on the top, next to 26 Cross Street, actually encroaches on a corner of 26 Cross Street's property, and it might be advisable to have them shift it down, so that it's not on the neighboring property. Either that or grant some kind of easement to the, this property owner to put a landscape island there.
Okay, we close public comment. Do we have any more comments, questions from the board? Any action taken, any motions? We have one.
I move that we approve the site plan, subject to the following conditions of approval, as listed in the Town Planning Officer's Report, numbers one through 12, one through 11, and, yeah, one through 12, with the additions of adjusting the landscape island, so that it is not on a butter's property, as was shown in the plan. Can't read what I wrote there, someone else can add it. What Barbara said on the fence, obtaining a driveway permit, and if snow storage conditions change with runoff to wetlands, that it will or can be addressed by this board in the future.
Did you get the one about the drainage easements? Show existing drainage easements.
It sort of looks like that, I just couldn't read what I wrote there, so, sorry about that. It says something about easements, and that might.
Megan had just said, she asked if they could show.
Show existing.
That's the word.
Existing drainage easements per note number four on the plan, yes, thank you.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Two seconds.
It's a good thing, Gail, it's going.
It's already written down, Gail. I already got it.
It'll look different from what you said.
Thank you.
It's like airplane, right? Read that back to us.
Roger.
Speak on your motion. No comments, questions from the board? Any, okay, let's take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Seven zero.
Excuse me for a moment. We have to vote on the site plan before we go into.
Good luck, gentlemen. Thank you, have a good night. Good luck. Next on the agenda, map two, Lot 69, completeness review, site plan review hearing, for a proposal to add dairy production to the existing Shirley farm, that currently has a hay and crop production business. James Shirley, 106 Shirley Hill Road, Zoned Agricultural. Brian, could you tell us about this one, please?
Yes, so, this is a proposal to basically develop a dairy facility within an existing barn structure that is on the property at the Shirley farm. They currently actually already have a number of cows on the property, and are looking to just get a more formalized milking facility. They're looking at doing a co-op type business with, you know, being able to have people sign up and purchase milk as it's available and as, you know, people are available, so. The proposed dairy would house up to 12 cows. They have a lease agreement with Benedict Dairy, which used to be down on Chop田Hill Road, and where they moved that location with their cows to this location. So, that's kind of where they came from before. The reason I had brought this to you was, I felt that this was a non-residential use that didn't exist on the property at the time. Yes, it is a farm, however, I felt that a dairy use is kind of an expansion of that existing use, which would require public notification and a butter notification of, you know, expanded use, and that they should come before the planning board and obtain a site plan approval. So, they are here before you for that. They have requested in their memo that they feel like they're not required to do that, but I'll, I guess I'll leave that to the board's decision, and if you want to say anything about that, you're welcome to. They're, in their application, they state that it's, the present use is hay and crop production, and that the proposed use is all of the above plus dairy. So, that was kind of my determination, is to the expansion of the existing use. Now, I don't know if, at any previous point in time, they had dairy cows on the property. They do, they did state that they had livestock raising at some other point in time, and they've got horses that they do keep on the site. But this is kind of a use that would be different than the rest, I think, and also is turning it kind of into a more of a commercial thing, where they will have people coming to the site and purchasing their milk from the farm, so. They did provide a non-engineered site plan. They asked for a number of waivers, basically for site plan, well, they actually asked for a waiver of site plan in their memo entirely, and if that couldn't be determined by the board, that they would then waive, basically, a long list of waivers of development regulations in our regulations regarding items that would need to be submitted as part of a site plan application. Now, it's not my intent to put any kind of onerous regulation on the addition of a small dairy for up to 12 cows, and I do recognize that this is an existing farm, and that they are not doing a major expansion of any sorts, but I did feel it's still necessary that the planning board make an official approval of this, and that that way it kind of backs them up legally, as far as what their approved use is on the site, and it also provides the chance for any abutters to come and speak to their concerns. We did have a few comments from engineering regarding modification to the driveways. They just asked the question, will there be any modification of the driveways to the barn or the gravel area next to the barn as part of this facility? Oh, I also will mention, I did receive today a response letter from the applicant, which is on your amended packet today, so you should see that in the pile of extra stuff that you got on your table tonight. There's a response letter of basically what they have addressed as far as comments that were in this report. Megan asked a question also, how will the manifold sprayers for gray water work in the winter without freezing? She also asked, what is the setback from the town right-of-way line? She also asked, what is the setback from the town right-of-way line for the gray water filter system and tanks? She suggests thirty-five feet from the right-of-way to maintain separation from perforated drainage pipes installed in 2009. This is similar to the reduced open drainage setback for septic systems. And then also, will an operations and maintenance manual be submitted to the town, ensuring proper maintenance of the gray water filter system and tanks? Should a simple agreement similar to the private drainage agreements be required, as used when there are private drainage systems that require maintenance? And so, I'm going to let the applicant speak to some of those issues as they do their presentation, and how they are responding to those issues. As far as recommendations, I recommend that the planning board determine there is no regional impact on this application, and that they waive development regulations sections, and I don't really want to list them all, but they're in the report. There's a lot, and so, I'm going to leave that section alone, but note that they are as listed in the report. And then make the finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, or specific circumstances relative to the site plan, or conditions of the land in such site plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. I also recommend that the site plan be accepted as complete and ready for review, and that you hear a presentation from the applicant, and hold a public hearing to hear from the public, and then resolve any remaining issues, and approve the site plan, subject to five conditions of approval that are listed in the report. Now... The memo from the applicant that was submitted today, as I stated again, has a letter to me, basically dated today's date. It also includes a scaled drawing, which does, I'm not sure if it's got an actual scale on here or not, but, okay. I'll let the applicant maybe point that out. And then, it also includes an excerpt from some regulations, and they spoke to it, I think, in their letter, regarding the tanks. And then, and I think that's it, and that has some handwritten notes on it that are pertinent to the design of it. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back to the chair for acceptance and waivers.
Thank you, Brian.
I make a motion that the proposed site plan does not have any regional impact.
Motion by Phil, second by Richard. Speak to the motion. Any comments or questions to the board? Take a vote on that, please. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero.
Move that we waive the development regulations sections, as lines one through twenty-five, finding that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Second.
Motion by Richard, second by Phil. Do you second that, Phil? Motion, comments, questions? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seven zero.
Move that we accept the site plan as complete and ready for review.
Second.
Motion by Richard, second by Phil. Speak to the motion, questions, comments of the board? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Let's hear from the... Any more? Do we have any more questions? Phil.
I have a question. The map two, lot sixty-nine, what's the size of it?
Eighty, I think.
I think it's about ninety acres. I'm doing this from memory, I think it's about ninety acres.
It says ninety on it.
About a hundred, but ninety is close.
The entire farm is...
Yeah, it's large.
It's over three hundred acres.
Right.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Now, let's hear from the applicant, if you would, please. State your name and your address.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Shirley. I'm the wife of Jim Shirley, the owner of record of lot two sixty-nine. And I'm speaking today because I'm the one that was involved in most of the conversation and the planning that's gone into this project. Jim and I met Max and Melissa Blendo last February through a mutual customer. They found themselves in the middle of a controversy over at Chop田Hill Farm, Educational Farm with the town of Bedford. They were caught in the middle, and they needed a place to go with their dairy operations. And as it happens, Jim and I had, for a long time, been hoping to find farmers with knowledge, experience, and the energy to help us make our farm sustainable for the future. We're pleased to say we found exactly that in Max and Melissa. I want to just start off saying a few words about Shirley Farm. This year is our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, having been farmed continuously by the same family since seventeen sixty-three. I think it's no stretch to say, every kind and sort of agriculture has taken place on that property continuously for all that time. I also want to bring to your attention, you may recall that in two thousand and seven, the town of Goffstown received a grant from the federal government for seven-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars, from the government's Farm and Ranch Land Protection Program. And together with matching funds from Goffstown in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and another twenty-five thousand from a foundation, Goffstown was able to purchase a conservation easement on the hundred-and-seventy-eight acres of farmland on Shirley Hill, some of which was Jim's property, and a large portion of it was Paul Welch's, our neighbor. But what you may not know or recall is that Jim not only accepted a bargain, a discounted price for his easement of fifteen acres, he donated an easement of sixty-eight additional acres to the town, which was valued at four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. I bring this to your attention for three reasons. First, the large grant from the federal government is proof that they regard the property up there as of federal and national and statewide significance as agricultural land. Two, the large appropriation by the town, a great portion of which was actually approved by the voters, indicates the real commitment that Goffstown holds for preserving agricultural land. And finally, Jim's role in making this easement happen demonstrates his deep commitment to keeping the farm running as a farm for generations to come. But the easement's only the first step. You have to have farmers to keep maintaining the land. You have to have animals on that land to keep it fertile. And perhaps most importantly, you need to have income from that land to ensure that future generations are able to keep the buildings maintained, painted, and all the work that goes into it. So, that was just one of the big reasons why Jim and I were thrilled to have such capable people step up to help us with this. So, in early spring, the four of us began a planning process to establish a grade-A organic raw milk dairy on our farm. We submitted all our open land for organic certification to the Department of Agriculture. We met with people from the Department of Health and Human Services Dairy Sanitation Program to learn about its requirements for licensing. We spoke at length on several occasions with John Porter, who is the dairy specialist at UNH, who has personally been involved in probably every major dairy operation in the entire state. He is the statewide expert. He gave us advice on how to set up the building. We met with NRCS, the United States Natural Resources Conservation Service, to obtain their assistance with and their approval of the dairy wastewater system that is subject of this proceeding. And that is a necessary step. Their approval is required to obtain a license from the state of New Hampshire that's grade-A for milk. Then, with the planning complete, Max and Melissa Blendo made a commitment and applied for a federal loan to help them finance the setting up of the dairy, all the equipment that is required, even the purchase of the cattle. And with that planning complete, and they obtained the loan, construction started in July, which is basically the renovation of a twenty-by-thirty-two barn L, that's approximately a hundred years old. And in that L, the inside will divide it essentially into three rooms. About two-thirds of it is the actual parlor to milk four cows simultaneously. It will have a concrete floor, slope-to-floor drains. The other one-third will be divided. One is what's called the milk room, and the other is a processing room. These are all required if you're going to sell the grade-A products. And what that grade-A license means to the Blendos and us is that they will be licensed to sell their product to a place like Sully's for a third party. They won't be reliant necessarily when people come to the door. Okay, so, five weeks ago, we learned from our contractor that no further construction was going to be allowed due to a lack of site plan approval. We met with Mr. Rose on August twenty-sixth, and learned that he considered our project to be an expansion of a non-residential use under the development regulations that therefore triggered the requirement for site plan review. Jim and I were very surprised, to put it mildly. We felt we had done everything that was required of us to get a state-of-the-art dairy, and never occurred to us that we needed town approval for that. And we didn't really know what the issues were. We didn't have a, we didn't know if the concern was there are not going to be animals on our property? Was it because we were using this particular part of a building that was raising concern, and of course, the wastewater system, which I think is fair to say, to Brian, ended up being the item of most concern to everybody in this process, so. We did, at the time we filed our site plan application, there was confusion on our part on what the issues were. So, we requested a waiver of a site plan review in its entirety. And the reason we did that is because we were uncertain whether it was the intent of Mr. Rose or the board to permit or deny our right to have a dairy on the premises, or anything to do with the use of the premises for agriculture. So, we included a legal argument in there that said, we don't believe that this board, and we continue to believe that, can say what agricultural use our property can be put to. I mean, there may be circumstances where requirements can be put on for parking or that sort of thing, but not the use itself, whether or not we have animals there, or grow corn, or have apple orchards, or whatever. I mean, and so, I guess, our position is that if the board is not inclined to try to limit or condition our use of the property, that we would withdraw that waiver request. On the other hand, if the board is inclined to impose conditions, we would like to argue the reasons why we feel the board does not have that authority, so.
I think the board has already granted all your waiver requests, so. I think I understand, just for purposes of where I understand we're at, my sense is, without having talked to anybody else on this board, that we are moving rapidly to approval.
Okay, that makes me happy.
Given that the motion to waive the development regulations requirements is applicable to certain studies was simply done, and even I voted for them, normally just cringe at waiving anything.
Okay, well...
So, I think that, I want to thank you for that so far, but I think you were worried about where we were going. I think that's where we're going, so.
And with that said, we feel no need to argue. That question, so, our understanding from reading Brian's comments and Megan's comments is the issue of the wastewater system. And I, there's one drawing in the pack of it from above and from the side, and the latest thing I gave today was the scale drawing, and the scale is there. I did this on graph paper. I didn't have long graph papers, so I had to copy it kind of sideways. But each of those, which I believe is a quarter of an inch, is ten feet. And I did actually measure this with a tape measure, so. I will briefly explain how it works, and happy to take any questions. Basically, the floor of the milk house has three rooms, as I discussed. In the corner of each one, there will be a drain. Each of the floors in those rooms will slope towards that drain, and in some cases, may even have a little channel. And the purpose of that, the walls of this building will be completely covered in food-grade plastic siding, sort of, so that, for sanitary reasons, you can get in there with a power washer, and all the water goes down the floor and out the drains. And this also includes the wastewater from washing the bottles, to washing the milk buckets, to washing the actually milking machines that will take place there, in addition to the bottling of the milk, and any other processing that might be done, yogurt, or whatever. It doesn't matter what product you're making, the requirement is the same regardless. So, the system is set up so that any kind of washwater goes into the floor drains and out into a set of two seven-hundred-and-fifty-gallon tanks that are connected to one another. The first tank has a baffle system in it, because milk waste, like many restaurant or whatever else, has a high fat content. So, you pretty much treat it like you would treat restaurant coming out of, washing out a fryer, or whatever. There are fats that really don't work well in a system like these. They need to be trapped and removed, like you would normally do, by pumping them out. So, it's called, in parlance of dairy, a settling tank, because the water and waste sits in there for a period of time, and allows the things to settle out. And it traps the solids and allows the liquid to go into tank number two, where the same thing happens again. It settles for a second time, and then, the system is arranged so that there is a pump, powered pump in tank number two. And the outflow from pump number, from tank number two goes straight out to a manifold system, which is essentially a long PVC pipe that's this way, and it's up, off the ground. And it's perforated, so that when the pump reaches the float, tells the pump it needs to turn on, it pushes, under pressure, out towards the manifold, up the manifold, and sprays out the contents of tank number two. And it sprays out on... And it sprays out onto a, what they call a vegetative, what do I want to say? Right. So that forty-foot manifold is split into two. So every couple of days, when the pump needs to go, it'll do one side, and the next time the pump comes on, it switches and will do the other side to allow sides to drain. The whole point of the system is that the vegetative area is designed, it's on a slight slope, it's got to be the right quality soils, and it has to be able, it's of an area that will absorb the amount of water that you're talking about. So if you look at this crooked one, you will see that the, that the filter area is on the, it seems to be pretty far away from the tanks. And, and the reason for that is, we have a gravel access road into that field. It's built, it's hard-packed, it's up above a little bit in places above the regular field. And we did not have the room to do that without literally spraying on top of A, an impervious surface, which is this gravel bed, and two, it kind of would destroy our road to have it wet all the time. So the reason that that is so far extended is to get ourselves beyond the road, the roadway, so that the, the area can remain undisturbed and, and do its job. So this is a system based on, and there may have been some misunderstanding about this. This is a system that's based on literature standards, and these are the standards that the National Natural Resources Conservation Service used to design this system for us. And, and it's, it's designed for us because unlike most dairies who have a hundred, two hundred, lots and lots of cows, this is, this is and is meant for a much, much smaller operation, and therefore you have a lot less water and waste to deal with. And, and as his cover letter, which I believe you have a copy of, indicates, they believe will work very well for us. And the other thing that I think is important that you understand is that the, having this system work is absolutely critical to the dairy operation. It can't run. If this doesn't work, they can't do anything. So that there is a big incentive to make sure this is working properly, that it's maintained. Both tanks have access covers to check for how much solid is build up. They anticipate maybe pumping them once, up to two times a year. And the pump in the, in the second tank will be alarmed, so that, I believe it's a light, it's not a noise, but a light will come on to indicate that the pipe, that the pump has failed, for whatever reason, to notify people immediately if there's going to be a problem with it. So that said, we, I did, we, we got the staff review recommendations yesterday. We tried to respond to them, all of the concerns, almost all of which related to the wastewater system. The issue about, were about the driveways. There will be no change to the driveways. They all are gravelled, hard-packed, it is, we use that for parking. I've had a vegetable CSA there for many years. Customers come, go, come, go, and, and Mr. Welch has, has sold literally thousands, tens of thousands of hay bales out of our barn there. And it has excellent site distance on both sides, and plenty of parking, plenty of place to pile snow.
Thank you.
And, I mean, it's just.
Actually, you don't get any snow. The wind blows so hard up there, it doesn't stay.
That's pretty true, except it blows sometimes into the road that's, I'm melting this there. And I did provide copies of the milking, these guidelines, which I had not done before. And, and they're, because it's custom to, it's designed, there's no maintenance manuals. Of course, we have a pump maintenance, and, and as I explained to you, there's a great incentive for, for this system to be very carefully monitored and maintained. And I know that Megan raised an issue about where this should be setback, and actually, when I did the measuring today, and I'm, I'm assuming it's a fifty-foot right-of-way that we're talking about here? Is that correct?
Generally, usually, that's what it is.
So I just measured, she suggested a thirty-five setback, I measured sixty, and actually it was a very little move away. It maybe had been ten feet further in for us first, so that is not a problem. We're prepared to do that.
You did sixty from the center line, right?
Right. Mm-hmm. Sixty from the center line.
Yeah.
Twenty-five plus thirty-five.
Plus thirty-five. So I, I believe we've addressed all the issues that were raised, both by the engineering and by staff. And I hope, I haven't left anything out, have I?
I think you've done a very good job. The only thing I would say is that Sarah's operation, and she has shareholders, we don't have customers coming in out the street, and the same is true with the dairy operation. Max has shareholders. So it's not like people can pull up and say, I'd like to buy, buy a bottle of milk. These are people who've signed up for a period of time at a set price in order to be entitled to receive either vegetables if they're dealing with Sarah, or milk if they're dealing with Max, Max and Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Brian?
Of course, I'm sorry. I apologize if I skipped over something when I was trying to read in and listen to you.
It's okay.
I love, you know, the filtration idea. What do you do in the winter?
Oh, I, I meant to address that, because I did in the letter, but I didn't in my comments. What, the, the way it's set up is, the, the exit pipe, well, the two tanks are below the frost line, number one, and so is the pipe going to the manifold. It comes up into the manifold, and it is designed to, the minute the pressure leaves, all the water drains back to the tank.
Okay.
There is no water left in the perforated holes. Again, there's no water in there. It, it all gets dispersed, and then it leaves.
Okay.
So the system won't freeze.
Is the filter area, is that the grass strips?
It, it, it will, it will not be visible. It is just an area that we will, will fence off so that no animals drive on, no tractors drive across. And it does require some maintenance. You do have to mow it, you have, on occasion, you have to take things off, harvest things to, to make sure that it keeps its capacity to, you don't want too much vegetative matter to build up there, or it gets too spongy.
And that's the, the runoff that goes into the filter area, right?
Right. It's the second, it's coming out of the second tank.
Right, right. So it's, it's been, it's basically clean, it's a tertiary.
It's, it's settled twice.
Right. So I guess that was my question, is in the wintertime, how does that still work?
Well, it, it, it won't.
Okay.
I mean, to some degree, it'll, it will be like built-up snow, or, or, or whatever, depending on how cold it is.
Right.
But again, this, this system was designed and sized for double the anticipated capacity, because we didn't want anything to go wrong, and give us, and give wiggle room to it. We, we didn't want the system to be stressed in any way by, by what the demand's being made on it.
And, and don't mistake me, I'm definitely not doubting the system whatsoever. I am full, believe in these systems, I have a pretty decent elementary idea of how they work.
Okay.
And on the same token, anyone designing these, I mean, eighty percent of the dairy farms are in an area of the country that snows, you know? Okay, perfect, thank you.
You have anything?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, yes, Brian.
Does the property slope away from where, where the filter area is? Does it slope down and away from where the manifold is?
It, it, where it's located now, there is somewhere plus or minus a three percent. It's not flat, and it is meant to vary gradually. This is designed to have no runoff. I mean, there should be, when this thing is, it shouldn't run. And this, there's another, almost three hundred feet of land beyond the end of the filter area before the next property owner. And it kind of slate slopes very gradually towards our southern border there, and varies slightly towards the road, at the very bottom of the fields. But right here, it's very, it's, looking at it, you'd probably say it was level, but it's slightly not.
If I could follow up.
Right.
Just one of the concerns that I had had from looking at your drawing from today was, is the water going to somehow go backwards towards the gravel road that you have that, you know?
No. And in fact, when you, when you build the manifold, there's a trench dug, filled with gravel, so that any of the dripping that comes out of the manifold would drop into an area that's specifically designed to take it straight down and, and not anywhere other than where it's directed. So, and again, if, if you, if you've got an engineer's mind, you can read all those details in there, but we left it to the engineers.
Any other questions?
Barbara.
Just on the, on the map that you did.
Sure.
Okay. Do you have any idea how, how far back the two tanks, the first two tanks are before it gets dispersed?
I did, and I didn't put it on there.
Can you add that on to that?
Sure. No problem.
I figured you had the markers on your.
You know, when I did this, I was kind of hoping that the grid, I did it on graph paper, so I was hoping the grid would show up, but of course it didn't. It would have been helpful, because we could then just count.
And then for the filter area, you said something about a fence? Do you have any idea what you?
Well, this will be a portable fence. Basically, the, the, the cows graze all through and around.
Right. You're moving the fences now.
Exactly. So this will not be a permanent fence. It will just be an electric fence that keeps everybody out.
Oh, I, okay.
Okay, so don't, animals do not walk on it.
Okay, so it's nothing I want to ask you to put in the plan.
No, I don't think so. It would just be, it would just be electric fence that keeps them out.
And then I guess, this is maybe for Megan, for you to, to listen to. I'm looking at the comments, and I don't know whether Megan got a chance to see what came in this morning. Did she?
We, we just got this late, late yesterday.
No, 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 I'm not, that wasn't being, that wasn't a comment on, when you put it in, I was just trying to be realistic as to whether, when Megan had seen it, because Megan had made the suggestions about, about the maintenance, I'm assuming, of being concerned about the operations and maintenance. So I've got a question for, for Megan, because my recollection of when we require drainage agreements is when we end up with developments that have created runoff, and that we need to get in there, we need to have the ability to get in there to make sure that the easement of whatever type is designed is maintained. That's my recollection, and I, and I don't usually get into the detail of the link, but I know we have them on various subdivisions and, and.
And that's because we're ultimately responsible.
Because we're ultimately responsible for maintaining the condition of the road and making sure the drainage works. So I guess, if the applicant is making a representation that this system is designed in accordance with a new acronym organization that I've never heard of.
NRCS.
And that it's going to be handled all on-site. I guess my question is, do you, and we have a diagram as to where all of this is supposed to be on their property. Do you still think there are issues for the town? And I'm saying that knowing that you haven't seen this.
The way I thought is, I thought of an example at Rite Aid. They did an infiltration by a retention system upfront, that's all, the water just goes into these gravelly area with plants in it, and it perks into the ground, and, but we still have those agreements on that. I wasn't, I wasn't sure how you wanted to consider it. But when it's a private site with private drainage, we've done them in the past, but obviously we haven't had this kind of situation. The town does have some of these filter strips, not with, obviously, manifolds and pumps and all that, but we have some of those on some public subdivisions where water goes, comes from a drainage system and it runs to a filter strip. So, you know, I'm familiar with, with that, and, but again, they need, they need to be maintained so that they work. And like you said, it's critical to the function of, of the movement of the field. So I, I don't know how you want to, you know, I just saw that it was really close to the edge of the road, and, you know, we do have a perforated drainage pipe there, so I just wanted to make sure, you know, that it better be maintained, I didn't know if we wanted something in writing like we have done with other private sites. I was just trying to be consistent with how we, you know, again, it's not like this is a private development, you know, this is like, well, but, you know.
All right.
We don't have a lot of those private drainage things, they're more of the like underground retention systems and things like that, but we are seeing drainage type systems too, and these private drainage.
I would just make one comment, which may not be obvious from this drawing, particularly my weird drawing of the stone wall, but that stone wall is approximately three feet wide at the top, and it's been there for a long time, so that the whole wall, basically, on the other side is, is practically uphill. So I don't know if that matters, or, and I don't really know if we have any objection. I've never seen one of these agreements, but.
I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to, to figure out this, I'm not sure I quite can come up with a circumstance that I think is equivalent that would warrant requiring the, that's, that's sort of what I was trying to get.
The way the agreements are written, I think typically most of them say that, you know, you would attach an operation and maintenance manual, so it requires pumping once or twice a year, and it requires to keep the manifold clean so it doesn't clog, or whatever. It would say some different things that, that's usually attached to the agreement. The agreement says that, you know, proper maintenance will be done, and I think there's a phrase where if, if it is not properly maintained, and it causes a problem to the town right away, if it becomes a public have, if something happens that affects the public road, that's when the town would get involved, and we would write a letter and say, hey, you need to go fix your system, and if you don't, you know, it's, and you give them a certain amount of time, and if they don't. So honestly, we've never had to like go after anybody for any of these things, but we have so many private drainage things around town that several years back, we decided to start requiring these, because we were just, you know, installing these underground systems with no assurance that they were.
I still think of all of those as going in in conjunction with developments, though.
Yep, yeah, as they all have.
All right. And.
It's a situation, so.
So I just, I, I was just thinking that, I'm presuming that the applicant's email and information of September 26th this morning is going to be part of the record as to what the applicant is agreeing to do, and that, I don't know that anything further, I'm trying to think if anything further is necessary. I mean, I'm sure that the applicant is making a representation that they're going to maintain the, the drainage, the gray water filter system and tanks in accordance with best practices and is required by the dairy licensing board, and that if maintenance of the, and that if operation of the gray water filter system and tanks affects the town right-of-way, the applicant understands the town is going to seek to preserve the right-of-way. I mean, I don't, I don't know that a formal agreement is necessary, and based on the property, I can't imagine it's going to be, but I'm not an engineer.
If it's working properly, that's, it's designed to have zero runoff. And I guess that there's, the slope of that land, you're talking three hundred more feet behind that before.
All right, I just wanted to clarify.
It's going southward as well as tilting tiny bits of wood coming in.
Thank you.
Phil?
Yeah, I do, thank you. I guess following up on Barbara's comments, I guess, I mean, we're, we're dealing with twelve, possibly twenty-four cows, okay? Ninety-acre parcel, self-contained system. If there was a problem with the road or drainage system that the town had, is, is any different, Megan, of any other property owner that pumps out their septic system, empties their pool, and damages the town right-of-way or something? I mean, we have a way to deal with it.
Right.
And I don't, I, I guess, I, I, in a way, visualize this pretty much the same thing. This is a, this water system? This is a, this water system, I mean, somebody empties their pool, they've got thousands of gallons that they drain. I, I understand, it's different from having cows in it, but some of that water could be pretty nasty in, in the pool. So I guess, I don't see the requirement.
Maybe we should call this diagram gray water system location, because in fairness, if you didn't have all the information, it says wastewater system location. I mean, I'm not saying, but the reality is, that's what we're talking about ultimately.
It is, yeah, it is gray water.
I mean, it doesn't, I'm just saying, I can see why I'm not, Megan saw what she sees on a lot of applications, and given the information she had, I think the comment was appropriate. I just think, and I think the applicant with the information this morning really clarified.
Oh, and, and, and I, I agree. I mean, I'm not, I'm not criticizing Megan.
Thanks.
Well, I hope it's not taken that way.
So noted. I don't, yeah, I, I'm having a hard time thinking that it's necessary to have any sort of an agreement either.
I agree.
For all kinds of reasons. Is that all your comments that you'd like to say to the board?
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and do a public hearing. Do I have one now? I know, I was just kidding, right? Okay, let's have a public hearing. Is there, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Like to open it up to the, anybody to say your piece? With that, we'll close the public hearing. Okay. Do we have any, want to take action on this board? Anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I guess the question, though, that I have is, we waived so many things, um, the dairy use is a permitted use in the agricultural zone, what is it that we're actually approving?
I don't know.
Can we go in their money?
We'll listen to this whole thing and.
We're approving a site plan.
They did ask to not have one, though.
Yeah, but that was something that you should've considered before you voted on the motion to waive the conditions. With all due respect to board members, you need to keep track of what's going on, the time to address that, if somebody wanted to, was then. We are ninety-five percent of the way through this application, we put the applicant through the process of doing that application, and I'm not gonna get into the corollaries about if you wanna go back to that, that I think are very consistent with some public comment we had earlier tonight, but the reality is, we are on page fifteen of our application. There was a determination by your planning administrator that a dairy use of the property was something in addition to what was going on, they got a building permit, there had been some modifications to the property. I make a motion that we approve the application, including the hand-drawn of the site plan, with all of the dimensions on it that the applicant had, and, including the information provided by the applicant in regard, as to their email this morning in regards to the wastewater system maintenance, and the drawings included, actually, the request for the waiver of the site plan review in its entirety as part of the approval, so that these two documents are part of this, the entire site plan.
Okay, but if I can still ask my question, what, my question, what are we approving? They said they're having twelve cows, are we approving twelve cows if they go to twenty-four? Do they have to come back here? I mean, this is what I'm trying to figure out. Are we approving a, a, a gray water system for you, a private disposal system for twelve cows to twenty-four cows? I mean, if they go and they want fifty, thirty-five more cows, do they have to come back in here to modify the site plan that we're approving? I just want, my question.
I agree, Phil, and a condition of, of my motion should also include, Gail, that for dairy operation up to twenty-four cows.
On ninety acres?
On ninety acres. Well, yeah, no, it's not ninety acres, because they moved the fencing across the street on, on the other lot.
The, the dairy operation is being conducted on a rotating basis across somewhere between sixty and seventy open acres, the grazing.
The grazing operation is being conducted on a rotating basis, but the dairy.
The, the dairy itself, the milking is right there all in the.
The dairy operation is being conducted on, on that one ninety acre site, okay. So you can pass up to twenty, is.
Well, I, with all due respect, this, this was part of the argument that I was speaking, referring to before, because I don't think, with all due respect, this board has authority to limit the number of cows we have on our property. There may be instances where we, we need to address their waste, or the dairy waste, but for instance, what if the, what if twenty-four cows were not dairy cows, but they were steer? There is no wastewater from steer. And, and the implication of what, of what you're suggesting is that, all of a sudden, a two-hundred-and-fifty-year-old farm can no longer have beyond whatever arbitrary number is determined by the board, so with all due respect, I, I, I really hope that you do not limit, the system is self-limiting at this point. It is, is, it's designed in a certain way, and it's only gonna work up to a certain level of, of dairy operations. It simply cannot possibly handle fifty cows or a hundred cows, so.
That's just for your, that's just for your milking operation. You may decide you want some steer on there eventually, or some water buffalo, or some.
What do you need to have come back for the steer or more horses?
Well, I think they would, because that's what brought them here in the first place, was the cows they wanted to put on the land.
Anyway, this was why I, I did, I, I asked the question I did previously. If you're inclined to try to limit the use of the property in any way, I, I would like to make my legal argument for the record. If, if you're not inclined to do that, then we will waive that.
Would, would, we have a motion on the floor? We do not have a motion on the floor yet.
We do.
We do have a motion on the floor. But no second.
What is the motion? Could we read it back, please?
Hold on.
Brian, if she's come in, wanted twenty-four steer that didn't produce milk, you would've thought that was an expansion of the use, and steered her, and steered her in this direction, the same way that she finds herself here now?
I don't.
Was it the milk, or was it the animal?
It's, it's the operation of a dairy.
So it was the milk?
Yeah.
It wasn't the cow? Got ya.
That, that's my confusion. I share your confusion about all of this question.
Right.
Unfortunately, after nine o'clock at night, we're off.
The dairy, the dairy with its associated, you know, gray water system and that kind of stuff, I felt needed to be appropriately planned on a site plan.
Got ya.
Phil, did you have a comment?
I was asking for the motion.
Motion, she's gonna read it back. If we don't have a second, then we can, I'm open for another one.
Motion to approve the application, including the hand-drawn site plan from the applicant, and include the information provided by the applicant as to the email regarding the wastewater system and its maintenance. And then she added the dairy operation for up to twenty-four cows on ninety acres.
That was dairy, as in milking dairy operation.
Okay, we don't have a second on that. Uh, do we have another motion?
I make a motion to approve the gray water system for the Shirley, for map two, lot sixty-nine.
A second. Period. Uh, motion by Phil, second by Chris. Speak to your motion?
No, I, I think, from what I see, that's the only thing that we really have in, in front of us. I mean, my concern is, as was brought out, is the amount of animals. Uh, I mean, the last working farm that we had in Goffstown was on Addison Road, was Anacopoulos. And it had a lot more, had, he had eighty at one time, and even more cows than that. And in my understanding is, the town never had a gray water system here. So, uh, I mean, we're, we're looking at, at twelve cows, I mean, this has been a bicentennial, bicentennial hay farm, it's been, I, I, I mean, I, I don't wanna go into that, what it is, I mean, twenty, twelve cows on, on, on that, I, the only thing I see that to be approved is a gray water system.
I agree.
Chris, you'd like to comment on your second?
If we're approving, and I agree, I think we're just approving the gray water system, I definitely don't wanna get into approving what they should, can do with their land, can't do with their land. If it would make the town feel better to have a comment in there that if their dairy farm grows, and we would have to revisit the gray water system plan to accommodate that, just like a septic system for a house, it's designed for four bedrooms, if you get eight bedrooms, you gotta redo the septic system. If we need to do something like that, I'm okay with it, but I don't wanna get into limiting.
You don't wanna amend the motion? You don't, you don't, you don't wanna make, you don't wanna amend this mo, you don't?
No, no, no.
I'm trying to amend the motion. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask the applicant really quick? You said that this was designed for twice as many as you even foresee using right now.
Well, this, that was done not for any plan, but for.
No, but in abundance of caution.
But, but what I'd like to say about your latest comment about having to come back, the running of a dairy depends on a license. You only get the license if it's working. If it's not working, you have to change it, make it bigger. And in that circumstance, depending upon what the regulations say at the time, that may or may not happen, the decision will be made whether or not by either a new board or by a new owner, or somebody down the way will make that determination. I, I hope that you will not predetermine that issue now by language put, put in here. That's all I'm saying. It's, um, what happens, and what is agriculture, and what isn't, I, I, I don't want that out there for the generations to come to say they only get to have without your permission of this board.
Right, and this, and this motion is only for the gray water system, it doesn't limit the use of the farm.
No.
And.
Well, if, if I can just.
Yes, sir.
Add to that, I think that gray water system that you have there, with what you have to go through for the organic farm, you're gonna have inspections through the course of the year, these things are gonna have to probably, there's probably a testing requirement for this, you probably have to fill out tons of paperwork, as it is, to certify the organic on it.
That's true.
And I would hate to see that if you decided to get twelve goats, that you'd have to come back in here and have another site plan for twelve goats, because you're gonna have raw, uh, raw, uh, organic milk, goat milk.
I agree.
Right. Protect our landowners and farmers.
Yes, definitely.
And let them.
No farms, no food.
Right.
I'm fine with keeping my second without amending it.
Okay. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor by Phil, second by Chris.
Sure.
Yes, Brian?
Um, I just wanna just say, I think it, it seems a little strange for us to not approve as a site plan with drainage system, especially since I think all of you are on board with whatever this proposal is. I don't know that, I don't, it wasn't ever my intent to say that we need to limit number of cows, but that this package as whatever they've submitted can be considered a site plan, and that was what the, the application was, that was what, you know, the requirement in our development regulations that I stated to them up front was. So I, I don't really think it's a big deal for you to approve it as a site plan, and that, and that kind of gives them, up in, in the future, justification that, yeah, we've been through the planning board, we got our site plan. And I, I know it's been a farm for a long time, but, you know, as I saw it, it was an expansion of, you know, something that they had previously, and so that, that was where I came up with the determination of site plan. And in, in our development regulations, any expansion that says a, a change in use shall be any use that causes an increase in the intensity of present use, or an increase in the parking requirements, or increase in the intensity of present use. That's where I saw it as requiring site plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Phil.
Brian, I, I understand that, I guess, what I have a concern with is anybody that has ninety acres, or anybody that has twenty acres, or ten acres, or five acres in the agricultural zone, I mean, if you want, if, if you start raising, you get thirty chickens, that's an intensity of use. You've changed it.
Well, but this is for.
I mean, we're looking at twelve cows.
This is for a commercial operation. It's not, it's not to use for your own use, it's for a commercial operation.
But farm stands have been allowed in the agricultural zone, are they still allowed a farm stand to sell what you produce on the agricultural land?
Um, well, okay, they've, they've applied to the federal government to get a license to be able to sell this milk to places like Sully's. So if you ask me, that's asking for commercial, commercialization of this.
If you decide to grow watermelons and sell them to Deveron's Farm, is that an intensity of use?
We have state.
If I haven't, decide to plant apple trees, and I have so many apples, I gotta sell them to Max Apples.
We have statute six seventy-four, colon, thirty-two B. Any agricultural use which exists pursuant to RSA six seventy-four thirty-two A may, without restriction, be expanded, altered, to meet changing technology or markets, and changed to another agricultural use as set forth in RSA twenty-one thirty-four A. So long as such expansion, alteration, or change complies with all federal and state laws, regulations, and rules, including the best management practices adopted by the Commission of Agriculture Markets, and however the following limitations.
It's not a change in a currently existing system, it's a new system. I think the board wants to approve it. We wanna spend a lot of time talking about a site plan, or whatever, go ahead, but the reality is, is that this is a new system on the property, it is no different, as it's been, if somebody continues to use, but expands it. Now, it just so happens that if you get a septic for your home, you go to the state for the approval, but under this particular circumstance, I think if the planning staff has made the appropriate determination, that it was a change in use. They put the cows there, that didn't create, trigger the issue, they've done building work that hasn't triggered the issue, the issue was the installation of a dairy operation with the required wastewater system. If, if they were steer, you wouldn't be seeing this. If they were more horses, you wouldn't be seeing this. And I appreciate the history, I'm aware of the history, the use, the easements, and I understand that there are people with agricultural interests who don't see this as something that should be required, but under that scenario, if I have a large agricultural lot, you're telling me I can do anything so long as it's deemed agricultural and not require a permit from the town? And that makes no sense. But under that scenario, if I have a large agricultural lot, you're telling me I can do anything so long as it's deemed agricultural and not require a permit from the town? And that makes no sense. Because if I have a ninety acre lot, and I haven't done anything, I've never had a cow on it, and now I want to put a dairy operation on it, what you're telling me is, I don't need to get any permits whatsoever. And I just think that's incorrect. I think the board ought to approve the site plan. We waived a number of requirements to ensure that this applicant didn't have to deal with things like topography, traffic studies. We didn't even talk about it. We just waived them in light of the good work that this applicant did in regards to what the current status of the lot is and what the proposal is. I don't quite understand why we're getting into this detail on it when we seem to have skipped that discussion at the beginning. And I apologize for adding to the confusion by willing to, by being willing to amend my initial motion in an attempt to satisfy our selectmen's rep in regards to the number of cows. I would have never done so if I had clearly thought it through. But it's after nine o'clock, and my clear thinking abilities are usually somewhat limited.
Can I just also point out, that statute, John, that is being referenced, there is a limitation, there's actually two limitations, A and B. The second one says that any new establishment, reestablishment after disuse or significant expansion of a farm stand, retail operation, or other use involving onsite transactions with the public may be made subject to applicable special exception, building permit, or other local land use board approval, and may be regulated to prevent traffic and parking from adversely impacting adjacent property, streets, and sidewalks, or public safety. This basically gives the limitation that you still have to meet any town rules that are in place for expansion of an existing facility.
I agree, statutes do limit property rights. Phil?
Well, I, I agree with everything that's been said. The only thing is, is that I don't view twelve cows in a cooperative operation. If they came in and they said they wanted to have eighty cows, sixty cows, fifty cows, and they were going to have a big operation, and a milk truck was going to come in twice, every day, like it used to come up Addison Road at four-thirty every morning up to the farm to empty the tanks, because they had to milk the cows twice a day. I, I could see that. I could, because now you've got a milk truck coming in on that type into the neighborhood. This is a different operation, twelve cows. I mean, twelve cows, where I live, Mr. Grady had over twelve cows he used to milk on the milk floor. I, I don't see twelve cows as, as an issue. That's my, my view. And I, I think what the planning board is trying to say is that, what my interpretation is, and if other people interpret it different, that's fine. That twelve cows does not appear to be an intensity, of intensity of use.
A change of intensity of use? Because it was zero cows before that. I mean...
If he brings chickens on, then there were no chickens.
I, I actually don't have a problem with twelve cows either. I'm recommending approval of this site plan. I just wanted it to go through the appropriate, correct process, due process of notifying any abutters who had, may have had an issue, because I feel like that's the appropriate thing to do. Okay.
So how do we approve this, so they can get this going?
Oh, I made a motion as a second, it's on the table.
Let's vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to vote in the negative, not for the operation. I'm not in favor of the motion, the way it was worded. I don't think it was appropriate.
One, two, three, four, five, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to approve anything else besides the system? The layout?
Apparently not.
I mean, there's nothing in this...
This was...
Other than the system, that's just got approved. You can, you can make a second motion if you want. I mean, it's...
What do you think, Phil? I think it's done. I think it's, I think it's done. I think we approved a, a system.
I mean, it was an existing barn. It wasn't a new barn. It wasn't a new construction. It wasn't an, uh...
Right.
I just think you, you had an application for a site plan approval. You didn't approve a site plan. That's what I feel. So, I think, I think an application is still hanging on the table.
Is there a technical way that we can null and void the application itself without denying it? They, she wanted to withdraw it. Can we allow her to withdraw it? Then it's gone off the table?
That was to withdraw an application for waiver of site plan.
Because she said she didn't think she needed one?
No, because we had already gone through the process of approving the rest of the waivers on the site plan.
Okay. So we have this thing hanging out there. But didn't she sit here and say, I don't think we need a site plan at all? Isn't that what I heard?
She said that. But the board moved through several actions...
Yeah, but those are all preliminary and perfunctory, and they're done on the beginning of every hearing. We haven't heard a single thing yet.
You accepted a site plan, you waived waivers.
As, as ready for review. We accept the site plan as ready for review.
So you acknowledged you had a site plan in front of you. And if you read through the materials, you knew that an issue before the board, before it was brought up, was whether or not there was a site plan or not. As a matter of fact, planning staff clearly stated in its presentation to the board before motions were made, those two issues. The board proceeded. What the board has now done is essentially approved a septic system. And with no building on it. And I heard the movement talk about why he moved what he did. We respectfully disagree with each other. I won't get into the substance of the arguments again. We've all heard them. But the reality is, the lot that you're talking about has no site plan by virtue of its age and existence. And what the applicant was trying to do was to explain so that future boards and future users of their property would know exactly what they had. I don't know why everybody thinks it's so egregious or out of line when both the statutes state and develop, and our own regulations say that when somebody comes in to change the intensity of the use, they come in with a, with a plan. And in this particular case, we waived a number of those. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is because it's twenty of ten. You're bringing this up again as if you want to go back to basically undo the discussion we just had and say...
No, I'm not. I am responding to what he said, which is that something is hanging on the table, and I was trying to find a fast and easy way to procedurally take care of it. That's what I'm doing. I'm not trying to undo the long and arduous discussion that just took place. I just want to find a way to move on beyond it. And if there was a procedural way, we could quickly cut to the chase. I was trying to find out if there was a way it could be done.
It would be a motion to approve the site plan.
Phil?
Yeah. Just in a response to this. First of all, I don't see how you can discuss the application if you don't accept the application, put it on the table. If there's no motion to accept it, how do you discuss it? We accepted it to discuss it, okay? In, in the statute that's brought up, it says intensity of use. Does it give you a definition of what intensity of use is? I stated to the board, I don't feel twelve cows on ninety acres is an intensity of use. That's my opinion. If nobody, if everybody else disagrees with me, I should have been out voting on it. The only thing I saw on there that had anything of any substance of, to be in front of us was something that was new, a gray water system for cows that I, that nobody had ever heard of before. So we accepted it. I don't want to accept, I don't want to accept a site plan for twelve cows on ninety acres, and now, uh, six cows, is required for six cows on forty-five acres.
Right, sets a precedent.
If a person goes and gets a cow that he never had, I've got to come and go and get a site plan. That's my, that's the way I felt.
I agree with you. I don't want to see a precedent set, that that is now decided that, oh, we want to be consistent.
Well, chickens are a permitted use in the ag zone. If I don't have chickens, and I go and get twelve chickens and roosters like my neighbors, that's an intensity of use. I've increased it. I've never had chickens for, since I lived there.
It's done?
Let farmers farm. Please. Are we done? Let's go on to the next one.
Okay.
You voted, we're done?
I think the feds are going to regulate that just fine. We should be outside.
We'll hear from them tomorrow. Map four, lot fifty, sixty-eight, sixty-nine. Completionist review, subdivision review, hearing for proposal lot nine adjustment, and re-subdivision creating one new lot. George Dick Perkins, Bog Road Zoned R1 and WSWCD. Brian, can you fill us in with this one, please?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I speak?
Can, no, can, can you wait for, can you wait?
What I would have to ask you, my technist, our planning chief...
I think he's probably going to ask to have it continued because the Conservation Commission wants to walk the property, and so...
Oh, then certainly speak.
Well, there are two reasons, yes. Brian has just stated one. And the second one is, I have respect and sympathy for the decisions that you folks have to make. And the frame, frame of mind that I think that you're in right now is not conducive to my, my point. It's a bit bluntly, sir. But I, I mean no disrespect, please. Thank me on my word for that. So I'm asking if we can continue this until the next meeting. Because of the hour as well.
When is the site, I think the site walk is already scheduled. When is it scheduled?
October, October four, three P M. We're hosting the Conservation Commission on the three, five, eleven scientists that were in the meeting. That was onsite. And the Conservation Commission was given a presentation Tuesday at their meeting.
But it's scheduled for the fourth, is that what it is? Okay, so plenty of time before our next meeting, then, is my point. I wanted to make sure it had been scheduled already.
I need his name back there.
Can you state your name for the...
I'm sorry, Brett Kohler. I work for Mr. Todd and Andy's Consultants, K O H L E R.
Sure. Yep. Sounds good to me. Right, we all have, uh...
Taking a nap next time.
Yeah, can we have a motion? Could we have a motion to, uh...
Can you...
So when?
I need a motion.
Next meeting if we can get on, but I don't know the date.
The next meeting would be October tenth.
Motion to continue to...
By that time, we should have our dealings with the Conservation Commission completed. Don't have a site walk. And if you want to join, happy happy.
I will be the key to you, but thank you.
I thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you.
I think we've got a vote, right?
We need a second, Phil. A second, Phil's motion. Okay, Phil motion, second by Chris.
Yeah, I'd like to get on before the Shirley...
They're not coming back.
All in favor of the motion to move to the next meeting?
Aye.
Huh? Till the tenth? All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
The unanimous opposed? Okay, five, zero. Two, three, four, six, zero. Uh, last but not least, map forty, lot thirty-three. Complete this review, conditional use permit, and site plan review hearing for proposal to build one thousand four hundred and seventeen square foot transmission equipment building, and demolish the existing building. Hearst Properties, care of W M U R, three Grandview Road, zoned conservation and open space. Brian, would you fill us in with this one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, Brian. Before we do this, I just was told that they're not going to, uh... Come back after October twenty-third. Conservation Commission meeting to discuss on...
Oh, the site walk is going to happen on the fourth, but the comments, they won't have comments until their meeting on the twenty-third.
Right.
Is Mr. Todd still out in the hall? You want to grab him?
I'll grab him.
No, you're just trying to get out of here.
I'm way out. I'm going to grab him, I'm way out.
That's halfway out. Sit down.
I've got to go get him.
No, I'll go. Fine, good night.
Good night.
Twenty, maybe the twenty-fourth.
I know that Bill, the planning staff has to give their presentation, but to keep this up...
They apparently don't care what date it is. They just would have us notify them when it is. So if we want to continue it to a different date, then that's fine.
So...
We'll let them know when it is. But if you want to, I think we should officially do that by the, through an action by the board, and then we can just tell upon them, they don't, they're just not interested in coming back in.
We need to make a motion to reconsider.
A motion to reconsider the continuance on map four, lot fifty, sixty-eight, sixty-nine.
Motion by Barbara, second by Phil. Speak to it. Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion to continue the application for map four, lots fifty, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine to the meeting of October twenty-four. That should be after the Conservation...
Will that give them enough time though to get the comments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should.
They, I can, I can talk to Patty about just writing up a quick memo after the meeting. And we, I'll provide it to you. It's the next day, so obviously, we'll be able to still talk to each other.
Well, and they're going to be on the site walk, so they're going to have an idea of what the issues are on the fourth.
Yeah, they will have done it probably much prior to that, and then we can discuss any...
Okay.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do you have a second?
That's fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yeah. Aye. Four? Okay, Brian, would you fill us in on this one, please?
Okay. This is a site plan change, basically. What's, what the project is, is a site plan and conditional use permit to take down the existing building that's on the site for the W M U R telecommunications facility that currently houses their equipment on the, on the ground for the cellular services on the towers. And then they're going to build a new building. And in fact, in fact, it's actually the opposite order. They're going to first build the new building, and then they're going to take down the old building. That way they can continue having service all the way through. But basically, they're going to be building a smaller building than what they had. The site plan sort of details, it'll be built kind of next to where the old one was. And, and it'll basically house their equipment, which probably will be smaller equipment, because they need us, they don't need such a large building this time. So, um... So, our zoning ordinance has several regulations regarding telecommunications facilities. And so, I've listed several items to factor into reaching a decision into your staff report. But basically, one of the rules and regulations in the zoning ordinance is is that they have to come for a conditional use permit when they're doing anything under this section, section regarding telecommunications facilities. And so, since that is the case, they've asked for the site plan and conditional use permit. I've added a few of Megan's comments. Basically, that they add the map and lot number to the title block that they label the approximate right-of-way width, that they label the classification of roads, class five on perimeter and class six on Grand View, that they add a fence detail to the plan and clarify if a new septic system is proposed since the old one is being removed. And then also, Megan said... Stated that she would do a site walk to check for any drainage, but that she didn't feel that it was really going to be a drainage concern because they were decreasing the amount of impervious surface on the... On the ground. So... And that erosion possibly might need to be addressed, but I'll let the applicant speak to that issue. So, as far as staff recommendations, determine that there's no regional impact. Oh, there was a waiver request for a drainage study. And so, that's section 2E, 2D, 3D of the Development Regulations. And I recommend that the board waive that based on the fact that there is going to be less impervious surface. And that the board find, along with that waiver, that the strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations or that specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions of land in such site plan indicate that the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. And then, step three would be to accept the site plan as complete and ready for review. And then hear from the applicant to do a presentation, hold a public hearing, and then approve a conditional use permit for the construction of the proposed site plan in accordance with section 10.3.1 of Goshen's zoning ordinance and with the following findings. And that's A through F of our standard conditional use permit findings. And then also approve the site plan subject to the following conditions of approval. And I've listed 11 conditions of approval that basically include our standard site plan conditions as well as Megan's comments on the site plan. So, with that, I will turn it back to the chair for comments and questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any comments or questions from the board? What is that? Let's hear from... Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that this project does not propose a regional impact.
A second.
Okay. Motion from Phil, second from Chris. Speak on that motion. Questions, comments, vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Unanimous five. One, two, three. Five, zero. Now, let's hear from the applicants.
No.
Waiver.
Waiver.
Make a motion that the... To waive section 2 dot E dot 2 dot D colon 3 close colon colon D close colon.
Okay.
Drainage study for the reason that the proposed development involves actually reduces the impervious onsite area.
A second.
Motion Phil. Do we... Yeah, we have a quorum, okay. Any comments, questions? Speak on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Simone?
Yeah.
Okay. Four, zero. Any? All opposed? No. Okay. Now, let's hear from our applicant.
We have to accept it.
Any motion to accept it? Do we have a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to accept the site plan as complete and ready for review.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, most of us, Simone. Second by Phil.
Aye.
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 All in favor, say aye. Oh, it's good to be the last one.
That's true.
Sometimes.
Always sometimes.
Always sometimes it's good to be the last one. Now, let's hear from the applicant.
My name is Sean Toby. I'm a civil engineer with Royal Tanner Associates. With me is Roger Rosendahl. He is a director of engineering with WMUR. The project I'm presenting tonight is located at Three Grand View Drive on Canuck Mountains South. The existing parcel is approximately 2.9 acres. It's primarily wooded. There's a cleared area in the center that's fenced in. It houses two transmission towers for WMUR. There's also a small shed, a garage, and an old oversized deteriorating transmitter building. And to alleviate this building, WMUR is proposing to construct a new prefabricated 775-square-foot transmitter building that'll house the new streamlined equipment, which is a lot smaller than the previous equipment. The new building will be trucked in in three sections and assembled with a crane. There'll be no full-time employees at the building, so there's no water or sewer connections. The previous septic that's there now will be pumped, and it'll just be filled with sand and abandoned in place. Once all the transmission equipment is transferred into the new building, the old building will be torn down. The footprint, foundation, heating and cooling equipment associated with it will be removed, and the whole area will be restored with loam and seed to match, you know, the surrounding vegetation. As mentioned, you know, we're not making any changes to the topography. It's in a cleared area already. We won't be cutting any trees. It's just low-lying brush and grass. And we also will be greatly reducing the impervious area on site. Currently, we're around 4,000 square feet, a little less than that. Proposed development will be reducing that by about 1,100 square feet. Just one thing to note on the application. I think it said the building is 1,400 square feet. That's the total... That's including the shed and the garage in the proposed conditions. The new building will only be 775. And then also, to address, you know, erosion and sediment control during construction, we'll be installing silt fence on the downhill side. That will remain until the existing building is removed, grass is established. We'll also have some strawbill check dams in areas if, you know, the soil isn't established yet. It'll prevent erosion. And we'll also have a stabilized construction entrance at the front of the site to prevent, you know, off-site tracking of sediment. And then, just to address, I guess, a few of the questions for the staff comments. Some of the right-of-ways. Grand View Road, it's about 12 to 15 feet wide with a 20-foot right-of-way. Perimeter Road is about 20 feet wide. That is a 35-foot right-of-way. We plan to add the fence detail. It'll just be a standard chain link fence. And then, as well as, there will be no new septic. As mentioned, there'll be no employees, so we won't need a bathroom. And that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer for you.
Thank you very much.
Just a comment. I see you have snow storage.
Yes.
Plenty of storage up there.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant?
Sounds good to me.
All right, thank you very much. You can ask during a public... If you don't mind, I'll give you that opportunity. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Any? Open it up to a public comment? Yes, sir. If you don't mind, come up in and give us your name and address, please.
Dave Franco. I'm the landowner at the... Actually, one of their butters at the intersection of Perimeter and Summit. I just had a quick question for him. As far as I know, I'm the only non-commercial landowner on the summit. I own that small 700-square-foot triangle at the intersection of the road there. It's got the chain in front of it, but probably nobody knows about.
Right.
Down at the bottom, you mean?
Right up. It's right on the summit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I know what you mean.
Do I have any concerns at all in any way, shape or form?
No. I mean, it's basically, this is just a prefabricated communication shelter. It comes in in pieces, and then, yep, the old building will be taken down. It'll actually improve the area.
Cool. Yeah, I was just... I didn't know if anything I need to be aware of.
But it'll be removed from the site. You're not leaving the knocked-down building.
No, no, no.
I guess that... I'm just asking that for his knowledge.
The plan would be to construct the communication shelter, and then we have to move all of the transmitters and transmission lines to the new building. And then, once that's completed, we take down the old building. So, it's...
Great.
Good, no further questions.
No other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
It's a pleasure. Thanks.
No other public comment? We'll close the public comment. Would the board like to take action on this one?
If I was more comfortable with the motion, I'd say yes, but I'm not.
I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction of the proposed site plan in accordance with section 10.3.1 of the Goshen's zoning ordinance with the following findings, A through F.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Phil, second by Simone. Speak to that motion. You all set? Any comments, questions? Take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to approve the site plan subject to following conditions of approval, number one through number 11.
Second.
Motion from Phil, second from Simone.
Comment.
You can scratch 10 and 11 on the DPDWs.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to approve the site plan subject to the following conditions of approval, number one through nine.
Nine.
Second.
Second from Chris. Okay. Right, okay. No, any?
I want to add one thing, though.
Okay. You want to amend your motion?
Well, I want to add one thing to it. So, I'll amend it to add a number... Replace it with a new number 10 that the... The... What's removed the building, all the refuse from the building is to be removed from the site.
Under the conditional, sure. You're okay with that? You're okay with that second?
Yep.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain? Okay, that's four, zero, one. Zero, one, yes, okay. Anything else? I think you're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good luck.
Motion to adjourn for the evening. I get that one.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded by Phil. Chris had that one.
Oh, I didn't hear.
Yeah. Seconded by Phil. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?